Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'll call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order Monday, June 26, 2023. Thank you for being with us here this evening in the council chambers and watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks to everyone here in the chambers this evening, everybody watching online, we appreciate it. The first item of business tonight is the approval of our agenda. And council, we've got a full agenda this evening, and our first parts of the agenda are actually the fullest. Under introductory items, we actually have five different items. We have, we'll have an Expo 2027 update, we'll have a 2023 legislative update with our legislative delegation here this evening. We're going to discuss our public relations strategic plan and social media audit overview. We're going to have a report on our external auditor, their 2022 annual financial report, and then we will have our state of homelessness assessment. That is our introductory items this evening. Our consent business is also pretty long, 19 items. Councilmember Martin has our consent business this evening. Under hearings and resolutions, we have two items for hearings. Item 4.1 is a public hearing on an ordinance modifying the partial vacation of Lindell Lane, and item 4.2 is a second public hearing, an ordinance to convey by quitclaim deed real property located in the city of Bloomington. And under our organizational business, we will have a discussion about our 2023 cultural arts support grants funding recommendations, a discussion also of the 30% of Bryant and Tretbaugh Parks, the consulting contract for final design, and we will wrap up our meeting, I'm guessing close to 11:00, and then 5.3 with our city council policy and issue update. So, council, anything to add? Anything, any corrections, additions? If not, I would move our agenda this evening.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. We have an agenda, and I will say, council, given the length and the heft of the agenda, let's make sure that we're, we keep our, we keep brevity in mind with our comments, make sure that we get our work done this evening. Our item number 2.1, first under introductory items, is an Expo 2027 update. I'm sure you all heard that we received some bad news last week regarding the Expo 2027. Finished third in the voting, rather disappointing for everyone, but there were some good things to come out of it in terms of the recognition it brought to Bloomington and the putting Bloomington basically on the world stage in a lot of different ways and some future business or development possibilities. And we're back to that word cultivate that we've been talking about this for a few months now. I think it's a great cultivation of some of those connections and the relationships that we need to succeed in the future. Mr. Verbrugge, an update this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. As the mayor said, most everybody is aware that we were not successful. The United States had put forward Minnesota as the host for the Expo 2027, competing with four other countries, Argentina, Thailand, Spain, and Serbia. And over the last several months, the conventional wisdom was that it was going to come down to Spain and the United States. And I sort of use conventional wisdom in the air quotes because some things don't always go as people think they're going to go. And we'd actually heard within the last couple of weeks that Serbia was surging, and ultimately, when the voting was done, indeed Belgrade, Serbia ended up being the city that was selected to host for 2027. But I thought it would be a good idea just to talk once again about what happened in the last few weeks, why it is that Minnesota and Bloomington were interested in being the host state and host city for the event, and provide a little bit of information that I know some people in the community are curious to know. So first of all, why, why were we interested in doing this? The expo for us, for the city of Bloomington, was looked at as being a unique opportunity to have a rapid transformative effect on our South Loop development area. We were very supportive of the concept of expo or World's Fair. The event itself, it's a unique major event that would have drawn people here from around the world, that in itself is special. The revenue to the city during that event would have been significant, it would have been a 90-day event, and events happening every day, it would have been excellent for our hospitality industry, not just the hotels, but our restaurants and retail that support hospitality here would have thrived during that time period. It would have meant a lot of pre-Expo programming that would have gone on as people came to Bloomington while the expo was under construction, and certainly post-Expo activity as programming would likely continue from an event like that, especially organized around the theme of healthy people, healthy planet, wellness and well-being for all, where the conversation was intended to focus on some of the challenges facing the world as it pertains to ensuring health and well-being for people around the world. And frankly, Minnesota is a place that has an ecosystem like very few others in the world, with the whole spectrum of health and wellness being covered. We have the, some of the highest quality of life indicators in Minnesota, we have the highest rated hospital system in the world, Mayo Clinic is here in Minnesota, the largest health insurer, United Health Group is headquartered here. We have tremendous research that goes on at the University of Minnesota and Mayo Clinic. Our med tech device manufacturing industry here is second to none. There's an organization called Medical Alley in Minnesota that has more than 800 members that are businesses that work in this field of manufacturing medical devices. So the whole ecosystem here is, like I say, is unique in the rest of the world. So the event itself would have been fantastic, the legacy around health and wellness would have been fantastic. The, the primary interest for the city of Bloomington was that transformative economic development impact, because we looked at this as an opportunity to very rapidly develop areas in the South Loop that frankly have been slow to develop. When you have a 30-acre parcel like the one that's next to the Mall of America, that's a, that's a big piece of land to take down all at one time. And this was a way that we could have done that and used it for the event and then convert those buildings into ongoing commercial activity. The likelihood is, if we had received it, that the, the value of those buildings would probably have been greater than $1 billion, the permanent structures, and if those are converted into ongoing commercial use afterwards, that's taxable commercial valuation, which would have been very good in the long term for the city of Bloomington. So there were, there were a number of reasons of why we were interested in pursuing this. And this does date back to 2016, 2017, when the city took a run at it for the first time and wasn't successful then either, but that was also very early in the re-engagement by the United States in the expo effort. What was different this time around was frankly the level of cooperation at the federal and the state level, and frankly, the level of organization by the local expo bid committee. Because I want to clarify for folks that may not have been following closely, this was not a city of Bloomington bid. We weren't the, we weren't the face of the bid, we were proposed to be the host city, we supported the effort, we certainly put our backs into it where we could. But there was an organization called the Minnesota USA Expo 2027 Bid Committee, which was its own independent 501(c) nonprofit organization. They did the fundraising necessary, they incurred most of the costs associated with the campaign itself, and they were the primary link with the United States Department of State, which actually took the reins for the campaign in the, in the last few months, because the decision is made by member countries of the Bureau of International Expositions. In this case, there were 157 countries that ultimately had one vote each last Wednesday, and the State Department was working almost every one of those countries to try and secure their support. And we were, we were optimistic going into it, that the State Department had secured that support. And then, like I said, things sometimes don't go as we expect. So that was, you know, like I say, that was why we got into it. We thought that it would have a tremendous transformative, long-term impact on our community. It would have been good from a property tax-based development perspective, it would have been good from a tourism and hospitality perspective, and it would have been good to develop parcels that have languished frankly over the last couple decades in not being developed. There was a cost to participating and pursuing this, just like any economic development initiative, there are pursuit costs. In this case, the total was around, I gotta, it was about 490,000. Part of that, 250,000, came through Hennepin County, and that was to support the development of what was called the dossier, which was a formal application. So that came through the city to the bid committee, which prepared that work. So even though that was a city of Bloomington expense, we actually received funding for that from Hennepin County and their support of the expo effort. So if you take about $85,000 of staff time out of the equation, and somebody says, well, you can't take staff time out of the equation. Well, our staff would get paid whether they were working on expo or working on something else. We code the time that we spend on different projects, and so that was the amount of coded time over the last year and a half that was dedicated to the effort. If you take that out, our costs ended up being about $250,000 for the work that we did. That included travel costs, it included technical analysis and studies, it included some meeting expenses, and that, like I say, was over the last year and a half total. So that's actually less than what the city spent in 2017, where we did a lot more of the pro, the development pro forma analysis, and we didn't have to do that much work on it this year. So we actually, we actually expended more funds back in 2017 than we did for this last go-round. So in the end, like I said, it went to Serbia, and so we are going to take a breath and go back to the drawing board. One thing I will tell you is we got a lot of irons in the fire. We've had people that have asked us about opportunities in the South Loop development area. Some of those conversations have just said, let's wait till we get through the vote, let's see where we are. And we're going to be at that point, and so we'll go back and talk to some of our partners out there, you know, some of the property owners and some of the prospective developers, and see what other opportunities are that we'll want to pursue and bring those back to the city council and the Port Authority. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor and manager. I did send some questions I had to you, and I think you covered those, but just, I'd imagine that not every resident is a development-minded type person. And so just for an example, I'm not looking for specifics, because this is not one of the questions that I asked earlier, how much would we probably spend on, you know, just ballpark it on trying to do just raw development in that area? You know, because I mean, you know, certainly we spent a lot of money upfront for this, and we probably would have done that anyways, and all this, you know, kind of increases that, you know, our visibility, as it were, as we try to move down that, that pathway of attempting to get more folks to, you know, develop in that South Loop area. Would you be willing to ballpark it, or how much we might spend on that, or kind of help walk us through that thinking?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Loman, I don't, I don't know if I can really ballpark that number. I will say that anytime we're dealing with development in the South Loop area, we have a number of different technical analyses that we have to go through. So for example, we have an environmental document called an alternative urban area-wide review that we update every five years for development that occurs out there. And that was one thing that was going to have to happen. We just updated that document a couple of years ago, right? But because of the magnitude of the development, that's, that's an example of work that we would have to do, and we have done in the past. So AOAR update costs, that's a planning exercise that is into the high tens of thousands of dollars, if not into the six figures, when we do those environmental updates. We have analysis of, like our storm sewer system, the capacity that we have in our storm sewer system, and traffic analysis that we have to do. So those are all, it's technical work that the city does to prepare for development. So those are good examples of the type of work that goes into this.
Yeah, thanks for bringing up that cost. I know that I saw a CBS News article that said that, you know, this didn't include the piece that you talked about in terms of having the tax revenue that we'd get from those buildings if those got converted. Yeah, they mentioned something about $728 million that we would have brought into the, into the city. So just this councilmember's perspective is that, you know, you know, we took a couple runs at it, you know, we got certainly something out of it, we would have spent some of those money from a development standpoint, and I just appreciate the fact that we're willing to go out and try to, try to do this for that area, and we'll see what comes of it now that we, you know, folks know where Bloomington is beyond the United States.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can add one more thing, thank you, councilmember Loman, is I was, I glossed over a little bit too quickly, just the support that we received at the other levels of government for the bid committee's work and for the, for the city's work. The last three administrations, presidential administrations, have all been supportive of this effort. Obama, President Trump, President Biden, all very supportive of the pursuit of expo in the United States. Our, our federal partners in Congress, Senator Klobuchar and Smith, and Congressman Phillips and his colleagues in the House, have all really gone to bat, advocated well for Minnesota in this regard, and we have, our local legislators are here for a different item, but they did excellent work this last session to secure a commitment of $5 million from the state of Minnesota to essentially act as seed money if we had been awarded expo, so that that early-stage work could get done before the revenues actually started flowing in. So the governor's office, our legislators, and others at the state and county level have been extremely supportive too.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think the question, the two questions I've heard most from people are how much of property tax money, how much of the taxes that we pay went into this, because there were, you mentioned Hennepin County, but I know that a lot of this money also came out of South Loop and other funds and not our general fund. Do you have an idea of how much came out of what we all pay in taxes?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, we did not take much of anything out of our general operating for, you know, we put our budget together every year in December and adopt something. We had some money for travel in there, it wasn't a significant amount. We, what we did is funded much of the activity using carryover funds. So, you know, at the end of each year, we look at our revenues and our expenses, and typically, every year, we have revenues over expenses, which is good, right? And so we carry funds forward, and that, those funds often go towards our reserve funds, and this past year, we held about $200,000 of that back to fund a lot of this activity. So yes, it's taxpayer dollar, it's general taxpayer dollars for the most part, but it wasn't something that was generated through the property tax levy. It's essentially what comes out in the wash at the end of the year. And we did have funds coming from the South Loop development area. For example, we have a, we have a surcharge in that area for developers, and that is to be used for these technical analysis that I talked about that are supportive of development in the area, and so that was the fund that we would use to fund those types of activities. So the amount of general fund dollars, I don't have the specific breakdown yet from our finance department, but it's, it's, it didn't come out of what was property tax levy dollars that the resident would have seen.
Okay. And so I do still have one other question, but if I can just clarify that, when we levy an amount, that's the amount we get?
Yes.
In our levy? So if we overperform our budget, that's because we've controlled costs, we've kept them lower, and/or we've gotten additional revenues from other sources? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my, my second question, and I know some of my colleagues traveled there, and can you just tell us approximately what that cost was? And I've seen this characterized as vacations, and I'll be honest, I've gone on business trips myself, and leaving your family, leaving your job, leaving your kids to go do this, I'm sure Paris is a lovely city, I've been there twice, I would not intentionally go back again, so no offense to Paris, but, well, actually, that probably was offensive, sorry. But, you know, these are, in my mind, not vacations, and so could you address, what was the cost, and then what, what did people do there?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, over the last year and a half, the travel expense and meetings, I'm putting meetings in there too, totaled about $85,000. When I'm talking about meetings, the mayor and I were at a number of events where we actually had a booth or hosted event going on. So for example, with the League of Minnesota Cities, we had a session where we focused on awareness raising for the expo, we paid the meeting expenses associated with reserving the room and food and that kind of stuff. But most of the money is in the travel area. What happens when we get to one of these locations? So for example, we had a number of people that went to visit the expo in Dubai. When we get on the ground in Dubai, you get a little bit of time to recover from the travel, and then we're onsite the whole time, right? We're meeting with the folks who were organizing the expo itself, the managers for the event. We spent a lot of time with our friends from the United States Department of State, who operate the pavilions at those expos, and we go around and we see what happens at an expo, so that we're better prepared as a community to host. And that was the intent of bringing people to these events. When we go to other meetings, for example, the mayor and I and others would travel to meetings for like the symposium in Paris, that was, that event specifically, was really the last opportunity to get in front of a large group of voting delegates and make the case, not just from the folks at the national level, but people here in Minnesota about why this was the best place to host the event. And so we're actually having direct one-to-one conversation with people to make that case with people who actually pushed the button. So I would, you summed it up correctly, business trips are business, right? You might get four hours to go walking around or something like that, but for the most part, we've got an agenda and a schedule of the time that we're there, and we're, you know, we're, we're executing on what that work is when it's being done.
Council, anything additional? Well, Mr. Verbrugge, the question that I keep getting from folks is what's next?
Well, as I said, Mr. Mayor, give us a little bit of time here to take a collective breath, and as the council knows, we have authority to be negotiating for acquisition of a significant property out in that area, similar to another property, the, I'm talking, of course, about the Marriott Hotel property that's been in the news, similar to pieces just adjacent to it that previously was the Thunderbird and then the Ramada Hotel. The city acquired that in 2016. We did that before we knew we would be competing for that 20, in the 2017 expo process. The recommendation that we pursue acquisition of the Marriott would have been interesting if we had received expo, but it wasn't a recommendation to further the expo bid. It's because we have the opportunity to control a significant freeway frontage in the prime development area in the heart of this region, right? And so if we're going to execute on what our economic development vision is for that South Loop area, having control of that land is going to put us in really good position. And so I think what we're going to talk about next is what exactly is it that we want to focus on, right? What is, what is going to be in the best interest of the community from a tax-based development perspective, from a perspective to bring in good jobs, you know, household earning jobs that are good for the community, and how we can go out and pursue those? I think that's what's next.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Well, and thank you for your answers, thank you for that synopsis, I appreciate that, and thank you for your efforts on this over the past couple of years. I know this is, in, this doesn't usually fit into the job description of a city manager, I don't think, and the effort that you and the rest of our staff put in was, was impressive. And I appreciate the work that you all did, and appreciate, as I said, the, how you represented Bloomington and brought Bloomington onto the world stage and set us up in such a way that I think we're in very good position moving forward, despite this, this disappointing non-win, I won't even call it a loss, a non-win, I think we're in good position moving forward, and it's due in large part to your work and the work of the staff and the, the relationship we've cultivated over the past couple of years. So well done, thank you.
So thank you. I also want to compliment our staff. As with everything we do around here, our staff is fantastic, right? I get to be the face of this, but most of the, the duck feet under the water that's churning is the other members of the team, and I can say with a heck of a lot of confidence that if we had been awarded, we would have been able to turn the switch on right away and run because of the preparation that the staff did to make sure that we knew what environmental analysis needed to be done, what sort of engineering work had to be done, and all of the work that goes into preparing for an event like that. And that's, that's a testament to their ability to plan and be prepared, and they do it exceptionally well. And I also don't want to go unsaid that you, Mayor and councilmembers, deserve an awful lot of credit yourself. This is not something that a city of 90,000 people normally undertakes, right? And so it's the idea of having vision, being willing to take measured risks, I think this was a measured risk. The potential payoff compared to what we did expend in the pursuit of it was substantial, right? And we also know that this is not, okay, we're done, we're just going to roll up our rug here, that we have a lot of opportunity out there. And so appreciate the courage that you showed and the leadership that you showed in your commitment to seeing this through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, any last word on this? If not, very good, we will move on in our agenda to item 2.2, a 2023 legislative update. Mr. Verbrugge mentioned in his comments about the outstanding work that our legislative delegation did related to the expo, but in truth, our legislative delegation did outstanding work across the board for Bloomington, but even for the state of Minnesota in so many different ways. As I, as I look at the work that they did, the, the leadership that they showed on a number of issues, the committees that they served on that moved impressive and important legislation through. So we, we wanted to bring them in and get their perspective on a, I think breakneck is the best word to describe the session, to get their perspective on this breakneck session that just completed not too long ago, hear a little bit of their input or hear their, what their thoughts are regarding the session, and I guess where we're headed next in terms of not only, again, not only Bloomington, but the state of Minnesota. So I want to welcome, this evening, we have with us Senator Melissa Wicklund, and we have Representative Steve Alkins and Representative slash former councilmember Nathan Coulter. Steve Alkins was also a former councilmember, I should say that also. Good evening and welcome to all of you. I'm not sure how we had this set up. Have you broken down who's, who's going first, or who's? No? Why don't you all come up, if you could, please? We would greatly appreciate it. As I said, you did outstanding work for Bloomington, but you did outstanding work for the entire state of Minnesota, and it's greatly appreciated. If you could, share with us a couple of things. First of all, the things that you're proud of in terms of the work you did here for Bloomington, but also- for, for Bloomington, but also, uh, some of the bigger things that you worked on and, and what you're proud of for, uh, what was produced that will impact the state of Minnesota in so many different ways.
I can, yeah, I can, I can go first. Uh, well, thank you, Mayor and, and Counsel. It's good to, good to be with you all again. I have to confess, it's a little bit weird being on this side of the dais. Um, and I also had to resist the urge to say aye along with you when you approved the agenda a moment ago.
I went through a period of that as well.
There you go. Um, you know, I, I think, um, looking back, this, this session was, was just historically productive and I think, um, the work that, that we all did individually and collectively, I think is going to just pay real dividends for folks here in Bloomington and across the state for, for many, many years. And I'm, I'm just grateful, um, to have, have been a part of it. Um, I think in terms of the work that I did, um, you know, I, I think we did a lot of good work for Bloomington, as you, you mentioned the, the funding for the expo effort, and I did want to clarify for folks who maybe don't know this, who are watching, that because we did not win that bid, that five million dollars goes back into the state general fund. It's not like they just cut a check to the city of Bloomington for whatever we wanted to do with it. Um, but I, I think, um, in terms of specifically related to Bloomington, I know from, obviously from my time on the council and, and, um, what I've heard from folks, uh, property taxes and, and the challenges that folks have been facing with property tax increases, even as the need to provide the services that local government provide, uh, that need is not going away. Property taxes have been a big challenge and we provided some really, really significant, uh, property tax cuts, one-time and ongoing changes to the homestead credit, um, uh, one-year supercharge, we're calling it property tax refund. Um, Bloomington, or the changes and, and funding we added to the local government aid mean that Bloomington will, for the first time in decades, actually receive local government aid. Um, and we also made some, uh, significant changes to the senior property tax deferral program. I also mentioned this as a way of plugging the senior property tax deferral program. It is a criminally, criminally underused program in the state of Minnesota. Um, and we also, uh, expanded the, the homestead market value exclusion. Um, all of that is going to mean real money back in the pockets of property taxpayers. Um, but the thing I would say that I'm most proud of is, um, the, it was my bill to convert the renters credit from a state-paid property tax refund to an income tax credit, which makes it much more automatic and ensures that folks that we know almost by definition are lower income, uh, usually people of color and very often seniors are going to see more money back in their pockets to the tune of hundreds of thousands of renters across the state of Minnesota. So that is, that was, I think, just a really, really big deal. Um, I could go on about the, the budget investments. I found myself, as, you know, we were sitting here waiting to come up here, adding more and more things to my list because I know how important so many things are to you, but I won't, I won't go into too much detail about that. Um, but just really, really proud of the work that we were able to, to get across the finish line this year.
Thank you, council, uh, council member. Thank you, Representative.
First time that's happened.
Senator Wicklund, good evening.
Thank you. Um, thank you. It's really a pleasure to be here and to be able to, to speak with you tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity. Um, it was a really, um, exciting and, uh, fast-paced session. We worked hard from the beginning to end and I'm really pleased with all of the, the items we were able to complete from beginning to end. Um, I think for, um, for my role, I, I was, had the honor of chairing the Health and Human Services Committee and I really felt that that was, um, uh, it was such a special opportunity to be able to work on that budget, um, this year and be able to do, um, so many things that will have a positive impact on, on Bloomington residents, um, as well as, uh, people all across the state. Um, in terms of, um, areas that I, I worked on, um, that related to Bloomington, I carried the, um, I had the pleasure to present the bonding bills that, um, we were successful in, um, obtaining support for the Bloomington Public Health Building, um, and, uh, one point eight million dollars to go to that. And then also for the Bloomington Veterans Memorial, which was a, a pleasant surprise, um, for us towards the end. It was, it was a pleasure to present both of the bills, um, in the, uh, capital investment committee, uh, but it was, uh, I'm really happy that, um, they were able to devote resources to the, the Bloomington, uh, the Veterans Memorial so that that can move forward now with the, you know, support from the, the committee and the fundraising they're doing. Um, it's really exciting for Bloomington to have, um, uh, such an asset as a, a Veterans Memorial and we can show our support for all those who have served and their families and, um, the stories that they can tell us, um, through that memorial. So I'm really excited to see that move forward. Um, well, we also, um, within the tax bill, um, I was, uh, able to carry the, the bill that, um, there's a provision that will modify, um, technical language regarding the Bloomington Central Station Tiff District. Um, I was, um, pleased to see that was included in the final bill because it does allow the city and the developers to, to keep moving on, uh, work in the South Loop area and to keep going with the, the kind of walkable transit-oriented development that we're really, um, hoping to see progress in that area and, and despite, um, challenges those developers are facing, um, you know, it's, I'm excited to, to be able to make those changes in the language so that they can keep moving on that. Um, also in the tax bill, the Bloomington, uh, Bloomington was successful in a provision that, um, I, uh, carried and introduced and it was carried in the Senate bill for the Bloomington, uh, local option sales tax, um, authority. Uh, and that is something that I've been working with Bloomington for, over the past couple of years and I'm, I'm pleased that now you will have the ability to, you know, make that, uh, presentation and pitch to, um, voters across Bloomington and, um, have them weigh in on, on these projects. I think they're significant and important projects for Bloomington, uh, residents to be able to, um, voice their support for, and I was really happy that, that those were included. Um, one of those, um, was the, was, or one of them is the, uh, Community Health and Wellness, um, building and I, I just knowing the work that has gone into the, the public health proposal over the years, um, very excited to see that that, um, moves forward. I, I really hope that, that, that is supported. Um, it's such a, uh, important need in the community for, um, a, a good and, um, you know, a, a substantial, you know, public health, uh, facility when we are serving not only Bloomington with that, um, but Edina and Richfield as well. Um, and then just a couple of comments to continue, uh, just the, um, related to public health. I thought as long as, um, I had worked so much on the Health and Human Services Bill and what went into that, um, and one of the significant investments is there, in there is towards, um, supporting public health. Um, there will be resources that will come to local pub, public health entities such as Bloomington's, um, and I'm really pleased about that because they do provide such great services and important services to make our, our community a strong one. They're also included in that funding for the Public Health Division, um, is funding for a program that Bloomington has also utilized, which is the AmeriCorps, uh, Public Health, um, experience, uh, that, um, Public Health Corps is basically what it's called. And that is a way that, um, that, that public health, um, organizations can help strengthen their workforce by having, um, these AmeriCorps members. Um, and I was, um, Bloomington has, uh, told me about their experiences with that and it seemed like a very valuable program and I'm excited that that will continue to be available for, for Minnesotans. Um, so I'll, I'll stop there, but I really, um, appreciate being able to come and if you have other questions about i- items and if I think of anything else, maybe, it'll be hard to, um, cover everything tonight, but.
Yeah. I, I don't think, um, the, the Bloomington Ice Garden has been mentioned. We did get, uh, um, some money to, we can make a down payment on the work there as well. And, um, uh, while I'm very publicly been opposed to, uh, local option sales taxes in principle, uh, if, if ninety other cities in Minnesota are going to have local option sales taxes, I think that Bloomington ought to be one of them and I will fully support the, uh, the city's, uh, referendum on, on getting that approved. Okay. Uh, it's transportation. Um, we had a historic transportation funding, uh, package. Uh, it'll fully fund transit operations in the area. We also have, uh, gotten provisions that I worked very hard along with Representative Brad Tabkey on improving transit safety. Uh, we put a ton of more, more money that'll be flowing through the, uh, um, Highway Trust Fund, uh, a, a big chunk of that, nine percent of that goes to cities, thirty percent goes to counties. Uh, I think in Bloomington's case, I think about two hundred thousand dollars will flow right, right through the Transportation Trust Fund to, to the city to help, uh, support our roads and bridges as, as well. So, and it worked on, on, and healthcare. I, I've been on a crusade to im- improve the competitiveness, the price transparency in healthcare. And, uh, two of my bills, uh, about passed that. One was, uh, authored by, uh, Senator Wicklund, one by Senator Mann. So I've been working well with my two, new, two senators and that kind of stuff. Uh, we got bike safety stuff in the transportation bill that I was the author for, so, uh, and I went to a celebration, uh, over in, uh, on Tierney's Woods Road last night for a constituent, uh, um, Penny, uh, who's been working for, with a group for twenty-five years to, uh, allow opti, uh, adoptees to see their, uh, original birth records. We passed that this year and, uh, I was, you know, proud to be her author, Penelope Needham, uh, or her, her author on that one. So, yeah, li- little, little wins like that. Uh, carried a, uh, a little bill that allows short-line railroads, including Progressive, to get an investment tax credit. So we want to make sure that we're leaning on Progressive to get those, uh, uh, Dan Patch line improvements, you know, going through the city and into Richfield done this year. I know there's been real concerns about some of their bridges, like the one across Nine Mile Creek, so, uh, they have no excuse to not make those investments that the city's been looking for, for a while.
Counsel, questions of our legislative team here this evening? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Um, excuse me, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for your hard work. I know, um, especially for you, Senator Wicklund, um, the, the, the night and day difference between the last couple of years and this year in terms of the speed with which you had to work, um, not to be hit your head against the wall, but actually get stuff done, uh, was a lot. So, um, on behalf of the folks in my patch of Bloomington, thank you. Uh, I especially think that we know that, um, forty percent of the population of Bloomington is over the age of fifty. So the work that we're doing for seniors, whether it be through public health or through, um, those tax credits or, um, through, uh, the expansion, even, I don't think you mentioned it, but the increase that we're getting in the homestead, uh, uh, credit, right? Big deal there too, because a lot of our seniors are in their homes, saw their homes increased by leaps and bounds, even though they didn't do anything to them, uh, and then, you know, got ex, got, you know, priced out of homestead in some cases. And so the fact that we are able to, um, keep seeing those things improve, I think will mean a lot to everybody in, in Bloomington. So thank you on behalf of my residents. I really do appreciate it. Thanks.
I, I'd just like to say, I mean, my, for next year, there's, there's a lot of stuff left to do. And, uh, I know one of mine, I'm, I'm still pressing very hard on my zoning reform bill to make it, uh, you know, easier for all cities to allow affordable housing to be built. And I want to thank you guys for making my job so easy by setting such a good example with all of the reforms that you've been, uh, undertaking on your own. I, it's noticed and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, Representative. Uh, also I want to thank you for, uh, all of you for following Bloomington's lead on things like Earn Sick and Safe lead and, uh, and affordable housing and, um, uh, the, uh, conversion therapy, um, but I, I don't think it's, it's not lost on anyone that leaders like you took that lead at, coming from Bloomington. I think everybody understood where, where your, your values and where your basis were with those, some of those decisions that were made. So we appreciate that. And then also not for-
The way you're acting, you're making our jobs a lot easier.
Uh, I will say also, not for nothing, the, uh, Public Safety Bill included almost four million dollars for, for Bloomington that will go to strategic investments in our police and fire. Um, and, and I will say from a business development standpoint, I know that for the first time ever, uh, the state created a, a Minnesota Forward Fund of five hundred million dollars for business matching grants, basically, and, and specifically two hundred and fifty million dollars, uh, for, for the chips industry, which we know is, is a, uh, a sizable and growing industry here in the city of Bloomington. And to have that as a, uh, as a, a, a state match for the potential federal funding is, I, I can't understa-, I can't overstate how important that is in terms of, uh, some of the proposals going forward. So thank you so very much for that. Um, I did it twice now. Representative Coulter?
He did it in committee too, so it's okay.
I did.
Um, no, I, I think, Mayor, I think you, you hit the nail on the head very well with your, your comments just now that I, you know, one of the ways I think that, um, you know, I know and I, I and, and my colleagues think about the investments that we made in our budget is, really, is really paying back Minnesota in a variety of different ways. The investments that we've made in job creation, in our, uh, K-12 education system, in our, I know Senator Wicklund has worked very hard on our early care and education system as well. We know those are going to have huge, huge payoffs in the future. Uh, I think I saw, it depends on who you ask, but investment in early childhood education can pay back as much as a sixteen to one return on, return on investment. I mean, that's, that's huge. Um, we froze tuition for Minnesota, the Minnesota State System for our friends over at Normandale Community College. Um, you know, I, I think the, the work that we did shows what paying it back really looks like. And I, I think everyone in Bloomington and across the state is, is, uh, going to be the beneficiary of that. And then the, the, um, final thing I would say to, to Representative Elkins' point is, as Bloomington legislators, our jobs are a lot easier because of the work that you all do and because of the work that your staff does and the work that Katie Sen, who is City of Bloomington's contract lobbyist, does. You all want, run a really, really good operation and that matters immensely. I'm not going to name names, but I know there are legislators who don't have that kind of strong relationship, that strong ability from city staff in communities that they represent to actually get things across the finish line. And that does make such a huge difference for folks here in Bloomington. So I did want to name that because that is important.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also want to, uh, thank our three legislators standing in front of us and also recognize we have five that represent Bloomington, even Representative Adelson and Senator Mann live in Edina. They don't, uh, live in our community, but they work very hard on behalf of their constituents here in Bloomington. Uh, so I want to make sure to say thank you to all five of you. And, uh, just, Mayor and Council, you know this, but I think the community should know that, that our legislative delegation is exceptionally responsive and we really appreciate that. Uh, you, you serve on multiple committees. Uh, Senator Wicklund, you chair one of the more substantial, uh, committees in the entire government, funding, uh, a good amount of the, of the state, uh, investment in people and HHS. So the fact that you still make time for us amidst that really important task is, is appreciated. I know that, uh, Mike Sable and I and others on our staff, as well as Katie and the others that work at the Capitol on behalf, um, they always speak about how accessible and responsive you are and we appreciate it very much.
Yes, I will echo that. So thank you so very much.
And I'll just say that thank you to all of you for being, um, providing us input on, on the bills as they go forward. That's really helpful. And then, um, just to, um, reiterate that you are so responsive when we need, um, assistance as well. I mean, that is really important. As you know, things move fast and just the ability to, to reach out and contact any of you and get responses so quickly, it, we really appreciate it. And, um, I appreciated and had, it was, um, a pleasure to present the, the bill about the expo and I wish that we had been selected, but it was, um, definitely, um, I really appreciate being able to present that and educate my colleagues about all the great things that we, we had the potential to do. So thank you though for, for all your help.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I, I'd like to thank, uh, you know, you, you're very well represented in the Capitol by Mr. Sable and, and Katie Sen. I, Katie is, uh, one of the best lobbyists at the Capitol. So you're, she's always stays on top of your issues and she works very effectively with us.
I agree with that completely. She's got a great staff too, is what I understand. Yes. Uh, I know you had a legislative wrap-up right here in the council chambers. I think it was last week or the week before. And, uh, I know that now it's an opportunity for you to catch your breath a little bit before it all gears up again at the end of the year, but, uh, appreciate your taking your time to come and visit us this evening. And I'm sure we'll get together formally, probably near the end of the year and talk about our, uh, legislative priorities for the, the upcoming legislative session and I look forward to that conversation. All right?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Item three, uh, item, the next item on our agenda is item two point three. And, um, we have, uh, over the past few months have been conducting, uh, an audit of our public relations, uh, and our social media. And, uh, we've got, we're, we're going to get a presentation tonight, uh, an overview of the findings of that because I think it was, it's been something that's been, uh, front of mind for the council on a lot of different, uh, fronts and, uh, something that we've talked about a number of different times. So I'm excited to have this conversation about our, our public relations strategic plan and the social media audit overview. And Diane Kirby is going to kick us off. And Diane Kirby is going to kick us off, and I know we've got a good-sized presentation here, so I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. In response to the City Council's interest in how the city could more effectively tell its story, the Communications Division has been working with Michelle Bono, Bono Communications and Marketing, to conduct research and develop a public relations, communications, and marketing strategic plan. The Bono Communications and Marketing Services includes strategic communication and community planning, crisis communication, marketing, and communications training. Before launching her firm, Michelle was an award-winning communicator for our local governments in Virginia, Colorado, and Florida, including 20 years with the City of Tallahassee as the Director of Communications and Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, Michelle will present an overview of the new public relations strategic plan, and our own Communications Administrator, Janine Hill, will share the findings from an audit of the city's social media that helped to inform the new strategic plan. Please welcome Michelle Bono.
Good evening, Ms. Bono. Welcome.
Good evening. It is very nice to see you all again. The first time that I was in Bloomington, I had been into your region before, but the first time I was here was right when you had had a nice snowstorm. And the first thing that impressed me was the sidewalks, that they were all clear. And I was like, I grew up in Kansas. We didn't clear sidewalks, and you didn't have that kind of great service. So I was immediately calling home saying, wow, look what they do here in Bloomington. And I was taking selfies with the snow because I was so excited to be back in snow, having been in Florida for a while. So it's a great honor to present to you this strategic plan. I want to try to go through it quickly, but I'm very passionate about this, and I'm very excited to see, I hope you will all see, your comments reflected in this plan, as well as the comments you received from your residents, from your staff, from business leaders, from a lot of research that was done that contributed to this plan. So we'll go through and then leave some time at the end for questions. So some quick background, and again, I know you all know this, but for maybe some of your residents that are watching the meeting, the fact that you're a city of 90,000, you have a workforce of 84,000. I heard from some of your residents that we are the biggest small city around, right? There is this sense of neighborliness. There's a sense of real passion for this community that exists. You have a very diverse economy, some of which we've heard about tonight, and the fact that a third of the city is used for conservation, recreation use, is a great attribute that you can't find in many other cities. Not to mention, you have excellent financial bond ratings. So why this plan? Well, my understanding is that, first of all, our elected leaders, the City Council, said, we want to figure out, how do we do even more? And I would tell you, you do a very good job now. We'll talk about that as we go through. How do we become more strategic? And then the City Manager, and then through Diane and Janine, very clearly said, this is what we're trying to accomplish, and we want it based upon the feedback of our community. And so that's really the heart of what we have. Community Services Department, for people who may not know, is led by Diane Kirby. That includes public health, community outreach and engagement, and also the communications divisions. We looked first at your mission and core value, and I think you guys probably know this by heart, but your mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. That's a wonderful mission. When you talk about values, in brief, they're about responsibility, courage, diversity, equitable access, safety, and security. And then we looked at your city's strategic plan, because this plan, again, was put together by your residents working in partnership with the city. And that plan, I would tell you, it is a strategic plan unlike any I've ever seen. And I've been in government for a long time, but most strategic plans are, in fact, pretty boring, right? They're very much about build this, do that. And so when I saw your strategic plan and it talked about, we want to have a connected, welcoming community, a healthy community, and equitable economic growth. That's the kind of visionaries that I think helps create a really great city. And so we tried to be sure that the work of this strategic plan for outreach and engagement tied into that. And so you'll hear some of that in our discussion. So a little bit about the research approach. So again, the city has a focus on inclusion and diversity. And so we felt like that was an important thing to reflect as we worked on this plan. Internal audiences, I had the pleasure of meeting with each member of the council. And you all were not at all shy about saying, here's where we can improve, here's what we do well, here are some opportunities that we see. And again, you'll notice there's an appendix that is associated with this plan where we tried to capture all of those, not by person, but more collectively. Here's what we heard. But I'm sure you'll look at some of those and go, I said that. Typically, the things you said were repeated by others as well, in the community as well. So you'll see a lot of that reflected. We did a lot with external audiences. I had the benefit of being here for about a week, as I mentioned earlier, when it was cold and snowy, but everyone was very warm. And we talked to business owners and said, how do you get information? What do you need? What are we not giving to you? What do you get that you appreciate? We met with a group of neighborhood leaders, and I say leaders, they were folks from throughout the community that came in and said, we'll give you feedback on what we want to see. We talked to city staff from different divisions and different departments, and your executive leadership team, and the city manager to say, where do we need to be going, as well as the existing staff within communications and public engagement. So we had a lot of feedback into this plan. So guiding principles. I want to mention this because, to me, these principles become really the litmus test, and they are best practices as we consider how we communicate. And so these principles, I'm not going to go through them in great detail, but you're going to see them reflected in the plan. These principles are things that, again, we heard from the stakeholders, that we need to be more proactive, we need to be ahead of issues. Let's not wait till the crisis is there and then respond. We need to tell our own story. And we have great stories to tell in Bloomington, as your legislative officials talked about what you're doing with workforce housing, and very intentionally identifying things like saying workforce housing. I heard this feedback. We say affordable housing, and people think it's for the very, very poor. No, workforce housing is often for people who have jobs, and the cost of housing is outside of their reach, right? So the language we use becomes important. We talk about celebrating the city's personality. People don't always know what you have in Bloomington, even people from Minneapolis, some of the people that said, I don't live in Bloomington, but I own a business here. And I didn't know how wonderful it was until I located my business. And now I'm thinking, maybe I should move here because I don't know as much as I should about the city. There's a focus on being inclusive. We need to be sure we're talking to people throughout the community, right? Not only the BIPOC populations that you're focused on, but everyone in this community that wants to be engaged should have that opportunity. Finding people where they are. We shouldn't expect them to have to come to a commission meeting, council meeting, right? We want to be able to say, where are you? It may be in a group that has nothing to do with government. It might be with a group that manages adoptions. It might be with a group that it's baseball, or it's, you know, youth activities, or it might be churches. Go to where people are. And then have strong themes. We should be talking about things in ways that people can understand. We'll highlight that more. Respect for all. This is from your strategic plan. If we're going to be a welcoming community, we have to show respect for people. And the last one is, we'll reward and encourage innovation. Going for a World's Fair is a great example of saying, we're going to show courage and we're going to do innovation. We should do that in everything we do. So these principles are what we will judge things by as we have ideas come up. I want to jump into the communication strategies that we're recommending. The first one is about building community identity. And the point is, when we talk about Bloomington, how do we describe the city? And we each might have a different example. We have things that we highlight. One of the things we said is that we should create the wording that we repeat over and over and over again, describing our community, so that people understand who we are. We should be sharing our successes. So when we talk about, and again, coming right after the legislative delegation, you all are doing things that are models for the rest of the state. And so you should be presenting at state conferences. You should be submitting articles into publications. You should let the rest of the state learn from the work you're doing. Again, whether that's workforce housing, or economic development, or your Parks Master Plan, we need to be sharing the things that we do well here with all of our peers, and we think that's a great opportunity. And the last part of this one about building community identity is then launch a marketing plan. And really, a marketing plan is making sure, one, our residents and those in the region and beyond receive the information about Bloomington. One of the things you'll see in this plan, too, is that it's phased in by some dates because everything we're going to talk about tonight, we don't have the staff to take that on. And we're going to have to figure out how to implement that and do that within our resources and some recommendations for some additional assistance, but we can't do it all overnight. It's going to take a little time. So you'll see dates that are included in that plan. The next recommendation is to increase media outreach. I heard this a lot from those of you here, but also from people in the community that said, we don't always see stories in the Minneapolis paper, in the Tribune, about what's happening in Bloomington. How do we try to get more media attention? So the first thing is, you have to know, who are those contacts? I would tell you, in most cities, they buy a media list because those reporters are changing almost, it feels like daily, right? You need to know, who's the environmental reporter? Who's the financial reporter? Who focuses on sustainability? And then build those relationships. So we talked about evaluating, how do we build those relationships? Part of that is having a way to track things. And I'll talk a little bit more about expo and how you all handled expo, which I thought was really well done in terms of the reaction and the response to when we did not receive the top win, right? We were prepared for that. But one of the things that I would say about expo is, wouldn't it be great to report to your residents how many people were exposed to the city of Bloomington that had never heard of the city before? And sometimes having a media tracking service lets you see that, I promise you, for expo, it was a crazy number. I bet it was over a billion people that had never seen. But my guesstimating isn't very good. How do we be able to track that? So sometimes media services will say, here was the reach of this story, and here was the tone of this story. And that is helpful to be able to know, are we being effective with our media outreach? We do want to garner coverage of Bloomington by the regional media. I heard that over and over. That takes putting in place someone that builds those relationships. You have to go meet those reporters and say, what do you need? When do you need it? How do you like to get it? What's the best way to get it? Interestingly, media still count on Twitter a lot, which many of the rest of us, you'll see in some of their reports, don't use it as much, the media still do. Is that how you want to get it? We have to build that. And then we have to use social media to share that story beyond just Bloomington. So quite a few recommendations related to media. The next one is, how do we get more feedback? So you all have many ways you get feedback. You get emails, you get calls, you get letters. You have the listening session before you have council meetings. One of the things that we recommend, and I should also mention, you take part in the National Community Survey, which is super valuable. It's very helpful to get the kind of feedback on a national basis. One of the things we're recommending is exploring some tools, and many cities have done this, and counties, where they hire a survey company that surveys residents regularly on issues. So it's not just the big issues. It's not just sales tax and expo, but we're talking about replacing a bridge and looking at some alternatives to how we might do that, or what the impact might be. You do a survey that lets you get feedback, not just from the people who come to the council meeting, but more representative of the entire community. So there are companies that do that. That is one more option. And then use those surveys for key projects, so you get some good feedback and you have a little more confidence, maybe, in what I'm hearing. I would tell you, that does not change the feedback you get from the people who know you. They are still going to call you, and they're going to share things, and we encourage that because that is important feedback. But how do we hear from a broader base is the recommendation. Be proactive. You all have said this over and over again. And what we know is that being proactive means we know ahead of time what's coming. And the staff has said, the first thing we know and understand, the city manager drives this all the time, is the council wants no surprises. Now, we may occasionally mess up. We may occasionally have those occasions where we didn't get the right communication. But typically, on a day-to-day basis, we want you all to be the first to know. And the reason is, you're the ambassadors. When your residents turn to you, they expect you to know what's happening at City Hall. And our job is to make sure that you know that. But in addition to council members, we feel like it's important to have proactive communication plans with key messages. So when we talk about, what are those key messages? It's how do you explain to someone, actually, just like the city manager did tonight? How do you explain why we did expo? What did it cost? What came out of it? And what are the long-term benefits for us? We have to be able to position that in words that people understand. Now, he did not pay me to say this, but one of the residents said, I like the way the city manager explains things so that I can understand, right? That's important. We've got to be able to say it in words they can understand. And so on key issues, our recommendation is having a project plan and a one-pager that has, here's the key messages, here's the most important things to note. And it lets people who hear it decide whether they agree or disagree. They may not agree with what we're saying, but they have the right to know the why behind what the recommendation was. I would tell you, from my 30 years in local government, governments don't just recommend things for no reason. There's a rationale behind it. You might not agree with it, but we can tell you, this is why we're doing it. And the other part is to identify key spokespeople and share those plans widely. I was telling the staff today, I went and visited the new website that's been created to provide factual information about the sales tax. If you have not seen them, you should watch the two videos that are on there that are tours of the two city facilities that you're recommending be replaced. Somebody picked the right spokesperson. First of all, there are staff from those facilities, and then there's a facilities person. And I would tell you, the things I remember from watching those is, in one of the buildings, the building is so old, there's no sprinkler system, and their fire alarm system is a handheld horn that they pick up and blow if there happened to be a fire. I'm like, that's the level of service we're providing in these buildings. I understand why you're recommending we replace this. The other one they talked about, we have this room full of seniors and we have one restroom. That's not good, right? It's an old building, and the facilities lady talks about, yes, this is a compressor, I think she said? It has that hiss sound, that you used to hear 60 years ago at your grandparents' house. That's what we're using to fuel these buildings, right? So for me, I need those facts. I need to understand, what are the challenges? And they tell that story in such a way that I understand the challenge, right? That's what we have to do with our storytelling and picking the right spokespeople. All right. Proactive crisis communication. What you do in a crisis will create more of an impact on your reputation than anything else, right? So I heard from many residents, as well as some business owners, about the great job the city of Bloomington did during the pandemic. They said, all the time, we got regular updates, we knew what was happening, we had opportunities to go get vaccinations, we heard good communication. What we know is, you have to have a crisis plan in place for every kind of thing that happens. So it can be snow, it can be tornadoes. There was a tornado, I think, last night someplace here in Minnesota. I'm from Kansas, so we think tornadoes are normal, right? That's a normal thing. But understanding, when those things impact your city, you have to have the plan already done. A quick, quick example, when 9/11 happened in New York City, the statements that Mayor Giuliani made the day of 9/11, those statements were written for him seven years before. And you're like, well, how did he know the plane would hit New York City? Now, he didn't know a plane would hit New York City. He knew New York City was an icon for the United States and that there was a potential for something to happen that would be monumental. And they had those messages already written out, and they used them after 9/11. And they were poignant, and they were heartfelt, and they related to creating hope for the future and recognizing the devastation, but moving on and saying, we've got to figure out how we rebuild and how we move ahead. So developing this plan involves putting an implementation team together, providing media training and crisis training for staff, and then creating this plan that we could use for any crises. The next thing involves business outreach. Here's the great news is, you all are already working on this. So the Community Development Department, as well as the Workforce Steering Committee. I heard from businesses that said, like the city, but I need to know who to call. Who's my person? Who's my liaison? So if I have a question. One said, if there's going to be something rezoned near my business, I want to know about it before it goes to a public hearing. Can you give me a heads up if this is what's happening near me? And they want to have more communication with the city. And they're busy. They tell me they absolutely read the briefing, but they'd like a little more personal attention. And that's exactly what the Community Development Department and the Steering Committee are working on, how do we do that? So we recommend surveying businesses to assess their needs and creating then a new communications program to launch that program. In the same vein, provide communication training for city leaders and staff. You all have excellent communicators, both on staff and as elected leaders. There's always opportunities to say, how do we do better? How do we make sure the words we're using are resonating? So bringing in someone to do that type of training would be helpful. And then also providing for your staff the opportunity to get additional training to continue to further the good communications work that they do. And then the next thing is to recommend, implement the key recommendations from the social media audit. And we talk about this, I just want to mention, because the goal is to encourage civil discourse. And I would tell you, that's a challenge for many communities across the country because people are not always civil. And so trying to grapple with that issue is important. So I'm going to let Janine come up and talk about the recommendations from the social media audit, so she can share that directly.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bussi and council members. We recently worked with, I'm trying to advance, but there we go, sorry. We recently worked with Eric Hanson, a nationally recognized social media expert, to conduct our first communications, our digital communications audit. We did so as part of-
Can I get you in front of the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sure. Let me just move it here.
Perfect, that'd be great, thank you.
We did the audit as part of our normal work to assess and take a closer look at city communications, what we're doing right, where we can make improvements, and to learn more about current best practices in social media. And to also be forward-thinking. It's important for the city to keep up with changing demographics, know who our audiences are, and know what platforms various constituents prefer. Much has changed since our first Facebook post in January 2011. Tonight, I'll present findings from a digital communication audit that we undertook. It may surprise you to learn that the city has 18 social media accounts. Police, fire, farmers market, and parks and recreation are some of the main ancillary accounts outside of the city's main government pages. Part of our research also included asking residents in the National Community Survey what sources they use to get city information. We found the briefing and the city's website were the most common sources of city information, according to respondents. But we also wanted to know people's interest in receiving news and information from the city on social media. Among social media and networks, Facebook, YouTube, and Nextdoor were of greatest interest to survey respondents. And here are some of our key takeaways from the audit, so that we, that we need to be successful on social media. We need to communicate in ways that people expect on any given platform. People have different expectations for content they see on Facebook versus Twitter versus Instagram versus Nextdoor. We should leverage the strengths of each platform thoughtfully and with respect to what type of content each system's algorithm favors. We need to take advantage of the strengths of each platform. For example, we know that Instagram users are primarily interested in visual storytelling. So, we reworked our Instagram strategy by posting only photos and videos and limiting the use of text-heavy graphics. Our consultant recommended that we post about topics that speaks to the interests of residents and followers. Posts that highlight beloved aspects of Bloomington attract engagement. Posts that highlight Bloomington locations and local stories also do well. If you're on Facebook, you know that these are typical of the types of posts that you, posts that you see from your friends and family. Over the years, our social media accounts have become catch-all for the kinds of city information. So, it's less about government news, strategic initiatives, event invitations. These are more effectively distributed in the briefing and videos on cable TV and e-subscribe, and more about what interests people, what interests people and how they want to engage. The audit also found that our email subscription service, e-subscribe, where people can sign up to receive alerts about a wide range of topics, had an exceptional open rate of 36%. Most industries average about 20 to 25%. So, this tool is getting some great reach and it's very useful. So, overall, our social media strategy, guided by our audit, is also a key communications element included in the new Public Relations Communications and Marketing Plan that Michelle is presenting to you tonight, as well as Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan that has a priority of Bloomington being a welcoming community. We want to show that we are a welcoming community in the way we communicate on all of our communications channels. I should note, our current Facebook directive does not allow comments. And the reason why is some of the vitriol on that platform. People have said that when they see that level of uncivil discourse, they don't want to engage or look at Facebook. Not allowing comments there is something we are still figuring out. We want our page to be a welcoming environment to all, and we are continuing to assess that. So, we will include these key audit takeaways I presented to you in our social media strategy and beyond to aid in our new communication strategic plan. We will share content that showcases the good things Bloomington offers, images that showcase our city, popular amenities, parks, arts, places to visit, stories about residents and staff making a positive difference, and create posts that encourage people to think, I love this about my city. This is something I want to share with my friends. Thank you.
We're jumping back and forth between presentations. So, there were a couple of things I'd wanted to mention. I would appreciate it, Janine, giving me a second to just look back over my notes. But I wanted to mention, as we talk about proactive communication, a really strong example was actually the response that came after the Expo. Some of you may have seen the video that came out from the mayor that explained what happened, how we moved forward, and why it was important to put Bloomington on the map. I watched that video, and then I looked at the media coverage and the outreach to the media. That video, almost every story talked about exactly what the mayor said. We talked about key messages, putting Bloomington on a worldwide map. I found that in every story that I read. Because that message was clear about what this benefit was. Now, did the mayor just come in at the last minute and tape that video? No. It was anticipated, it was planned, it was part of, and was there a success video? Okay. Yes, probably so, right? We had to be prepared because we didn't know. There was no way to know. You have to think ahead, you have to have a strategy, you have to talk about, how are we going to do it? And I was telling the mayor, when I read that and heard his message and saw that message repeated in every story, I said, we're doing it, right? The goal is, how do we do that on every plan that we can? Not just those big, those big, and I think the staff have clearly embraced that. Okay. Last couple of things. Oh, I also wanted to mention, at the listening session earlier today, one of your residents talked about, we want to know what's coming up on the council agenda. What a wonderful thing. Because people who care are who, those are your best residents. They care about what's coming, they want to know what's on the agenda, they want to be engaged. And one of the things that I think is so incredible is, when you have 30,000 people who have signed up for email updates. Folks, that does not happen. That's, I understand they don't all maybe live in Bloomington? But that's more than, I think it's 35,000? It's more than a third of your population have signed up to get emails from the city. That does not happen. And the fact that such a high percentage of them, and Janine said maybe 20%, most businesses are happy if they get a 6% open rate. The city outperforms that in so many ways. One of the messages is, we have to be sure we're making sure people know that that's an option. And how do we know what the short address is to get to the website that the council member shared? So that people can understand they're looking at the right website and getting the information they need. And we have to continue to find ways to tell that story so that people feel more engaged. But again, the fact that people care enough to come and share is an important part of what's good about Bloomington. Okay, just a couple more recommendations. One is to enhance the alignment between the two groups you have, doing outreach and engagement and communication. And that is the Community Outreach and Engagement and the Communications Department divisions. This is really more of an internal action, but those teams need to be tied together at the scene. So that when someone, when one group is out talking to folks, that they're repeating the same messages that we've heard. And so, we make recommendations to take this comprehensive approach with both teams, to conduct regular meetings, to ensure proactive, to ensure proactive planning, and then just to let those teams also bond. Do some team building, so those teams know each other and work even closer than they do now. Of course, you can't talk about this without talking about the budget. I know, always tough decisions. One of the things that's particularly important, and I'm not sure that residents know, is that for the Communications Division, more than half their budget comes from cable franchise fees. And so, we do have an obligation, and we do a good job of programming and having a city channel and using those video resources. Some of those great stories you see come from that work. We need to think about long-term, what happens if there are changes in that industry? What happens if fewer people sign up for cable? What happens if that cable franchise revenue changes in the future? Again, we're not anticipating, we're just knowing we need to be prepared for that because it may require additional sources of funding for that communication. Funding, for the things that we talked about tonight, there is, in your, in your document are some recommendations in terms of potential budgets. Those can come back to you as they look at what's going to be the cost if we add these things that we're talking about, whether that's surveying, or a media plan, or the things that, so there's some hard dollars that would be associated with these recommendations. There's also the question about funding for staff. And so, there are some recommendations for additional staff, one, one and a half, two people that could help implement these things that we're talking about. Again, those are things that, that can be approached as you talk about budget. The other point I want to reiterate is it's a phased-in approach. And so, the plan has dates in it. Those are target goals of, here's what we would like to try to do. What I would tell you is, a lot of it's already starting. Because the staff has said, we hear this, we get it, they're, they're beginning to implement the things they can. Within the resources, there's some things that will require additional resources. And so, for me, when we talk about, yeah, but how do you know it's working? You have to measure. You know, we love the, I love the statement, what gets measured, gets done. If you're not measuring it, how do we know we're doing any good? And so, there are both qualitative and quantitative measures. And so, for me, the quantitative are things like media tensions, website analytics, social media followers, how many people came to the event, your e-subscribers. That's all numbers and data that we can use to say, hey, did we move the needle? Did we change that? Qualitative, though, then goes to, what's the overall image of the city? Do residents feel welcomed? Is there a sense of civic and community pride? Do people feel engaged? Those are things that we measure through qualitative measurements. And so, those things you have in place, there'll be some opportunities for that to continue. So, for me, the key takeaways, takeaways from this whole process is, you have some great products. You have great communication. I think it was 93% of the people on the statistically valid random sample survey say they read the Bloomington briefing. Folks, that's unheard of. Find me another city where 93% say they rely on this newsletter from the city. That's amazing. The e-subscribe numbers are great. You do a good job already. The question is, how do we move from good to great? And that's what I think this plan is designed to do. You have great stories to tell, one, to your residents, but two, to the wider audience. Again, the Expo being a great way to talk about it and build relationships, not just in the state, but at the national level and the worldwide level. And then, the most important part to me is that this plan supports your mission, to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And that's really how we're trying to pull it together. So, I know we've taken some time, you've got a full agenda tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do hope when you have time, you'll read through the citizen and business comments that are included. There's quite a few of them, and you'll see small things like, we love that the city cleans the grates. In other communities, they don't. You're going to see lots, I mean, there were so many comments about how much they love your water. They love your water. It's, they take water with them on vacation from Bloomington because they love your water. So, you'll see some of those things that people love, and also things that they suggest about how to improve, that I hope you see reflected in the recommendations. So, any questions for Janine and myself?
Thank you, Ms. Bono. Council questions? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, excuse me. Well, good to see you again, Michelle.
Nice to see you.
This is really fantastic, and I, I know since I've been on council, which is January 2020, this has been a topic that council members have expressed interested in, interest in. And so, it's really incredible and fantastic to see the results in front of us now. But there are a lot of recommendations, and you did mention that it would be phased. And I'm not sure if that was included in the packet or not, like a phased approach.
It is, and we didn't put a specific timeline. But each recommendation will say beside it, recommend by July 2024. Or recommend by, so there are target dates for each one. That timing was put a little bit with the priorities of what, working with your staff to where, the idea of communication plans, for example, like it's August of 2023, I think. Some of them are more quickly, and some of them we know will take a little bit of time. I remember the business recommendations, it's like, well, we want to survey businesses first, and then we want to put together a plan, and then we need to roll it out and have a communications plan. So, there are timelines, they're really target dates, not dyed-in-the-wool, we'll have it all done by then, but to give us some way of trying to measure.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. So, I'm wondering, I guess, I mean, most of these sound like great, all of them sound like great ideas to me. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering what next steps are, or maybe I'm kind of jumping ahead a little too much. But what does that decision-making process look like? And I'm kind of looking over at you, Jamie, I don't know who would be the right person.
I can't keep looking to my right, can I? Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Carter. First off, we wanted to come here and get your, your feedback. Before we started talking about what is next, we wanted to hear the council's perspective on the analysis that's been done by both Michelle and Eric. Really appreciate their work, they, they work very closely with our staff. And as you heard in the presentation, a fair amount of community engagement as well. Because we tried to include the voices of those who are impacted by the decisions that we make in coming up with the plans that we're going to do. So, hearing from you is the first step. We're getting into budget season. I know that sounds crazy because it feels like we just wrapped up the last budget season. But we have to put the, you know, the next steps into the context of all the other needs of the organization. And so, over the next couple of months, we'll be working to identify where we think the priorities are, based on what's in the report here, what we hear from you, and then how we can incorporate some of those into the choices that you're going to make over the next few months.
Councilmember, I would also just add one other thing. We did send today this plan and all the information to every person that we met with, so that they also have a chance to see it, react to it, and give any feedback they have to Janine and the communications staff. So, we're meeting with the executive leadership team tomorrow to talk about responsibilities, because that's the other big part of it. One of my messages to the entire team is, this is not the communications department's plan. This is the council's plan. This is every, a member of the executive leadership team, every department has to share the responsibility of being a part of this. So, that's, it's not the detailed information the city manager's provided, but it's getting that sense of ownership and accountability throughout the organization.
Absolutely. I know, I'm super excited to get like key talking points for all of our big issues. And I'm assuming that'll be done in a couple of months, so, no, I'm just kidding.
It is high on the list.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I really appreciate that Ms. Bono just said that about what is and is not the responsibility of our communications department. Because our, our communications staff is really good, right? They put out high-quality video, high-quality print. Their, their information is really solid. They're only as good as the rest of us, right? In terms of the whole enterprise and operation, making sure that they know not just what's happened, but what's coming. And that's the whole point of this conversation about being proactive. We've said it before in our conversations, that I've heard that message from the council for a couple of years, right? And so, the desire to make sure that we're getting out there and, and getting in front of the story and letting folks know. Really good example is the zoning changes that were made recently, right? It's really hard to communicate with the city that the entire zoning area, almost of the city, is largely included in what was being discussed, right? And short of sending a postcard to every house, which gets really expensive, right? You have to figure, how do you, how do you get that information out? Because city communications is literally, proverbially, it is leading the horse to water. You can't make the, the horse drink, right? And so, we can put as much information as we can generate in front of people. The question is, how do you get them to consume that information and identify what is important to them? And that's really what's valuable about the work that's been done here, is helping us figure that out.
And I appreciate your comments, Mr. Brugge, especially the notion of communications is only as good as the rest of us. And one of the things that I jotted down here, the number nine, the, enhancing alignment between communications and Community Outreach and Engagement divisions. I'm a big alignment guy, always have been. And, but to see these two called out in particular, I, it just, I took note of it. Because I think we need to align the entire, all of the departments, along with the work of communications and Community Outreach and Development. And I think it's, it's certainly a much larger task, but Public Works, Police, everybody else has communications issues that need to align with the overall communications, the things that you just outlined here. And I think it's, it is certainly important, as you've described it here, to align those two departments in particular. But I want to make sure that we don't overlook the alignment throughout the other departments in the city as well.
Great, great explanation, sir. And I would tell you, in our meeting tomorrow with the executive leadership, the biggest discussion is ownership. And it's the exact message you just gave, which is, we have to, and it's hard sometimes when you're in the work, you don't always think about it being, quote, of interest to others, right? Because you do it every day, and you think this is, and it's like, no, no, what you're doing, how you remove the snow, or what we do in partnership with citizens to clean the grates, those things may not sound real sexy, but people care- the grates, those things may not sound real sexy, but people care about that, because that's the quality of life. And so trying to also get our departments to all look at things with fresh eyes, to say, oh, I never thought about that being a video or being a, a communication message, absolutely, that alignment is, is key. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for pulling this together, really nice to see you again, Michelle. I'm curious, I didn't, and maybe it's just because these are, you know, somewhat at a higher level, and there's not explicit recommendations, but I'm curious about what we are stopping doing as a result of the recommendations you make, because I have a feeling that there's probably some stuff that doesn't have a lot of value, maybe, that you've learned about through this process that we might be doing anyway, and maybe we shouldn't do it anymore or anything. Did any of that come out? And if you could share a little bit about that, it'd be great.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Councilmember. Some. So for example, what we know is we do a lot of long-form video. We do that in part because of our partnership with our cable franchise fee. So there's an obligation to continue some of that. One of the things we talked about was, that doesn't work well in any kind of social media post. Our attention on social media is 20 seconds, right? So how do we take those short stories and, and find ways to do them? So I don't think we're eliminating, we still will do long-form video, but there will be a change in trying to, to focus on some shorter aspects. The other thing that's quite interesting to me is that, and again, it may be different, but I find in most local governments, people don't want to give up the things they have now. So for example, in Eric's audit, he said, you know, well, you don't have a lot of people who are, are following the golf course. That may be true, but the people who follow the golf course on social media are super passionate about the golf course. And so sometimes the numbers, so it's like, well, can we stop doing that? Well, you could, at risk of alienating some of our very loyal golfers. And so I think that the staff is having those discussions, too. Are there things that we can modify without eliminating? One of the things we talked about was maybe not quite as many social media posts, but maybe making those social media posts the things that Janine talked about that the audit recommended. So there, I think there are recommendations in terms of maybe changing frequency and the volume, or maybe how we do it. I did not have anybody that said, you know, let's just stop Instagram. There's only, you know, whatever the number was, 23% on Instagram, but those 23% love Instagram. So I, I, we have some modifications, not very many stopped doing it, because people seem to value the things that you're already doing.
Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro. That's a good question. We actually did have a conversation about whether we should abandon platforms. And to the last point that Ms. Bono made, we, we understand that the people who are on the various platforms have different motivations for being there. And so part of the recommendations is that we actually tailor our message and our approach to the specific platform. So to the question of what are we doing less of, that comment about we, maybe we post less, because I think that we have often erred on the side of flooding the zone with information, and sometimes we just put, you know, our message gets lost because there's too much out there. And so the idea is being really thoughtful about what it is that we want to communicate and the frequency by which we do it.
Councilmember Lohman.
More of a comment, I really appreciate, I like hearing good news. So I like the fact that you highlighted some things that we're doing well, and I'm just really looking forward to this. You know, we, a number of us gathered to, to, to talk about what we want to do with the strategic plan, the community doing that, and then just getting this communicated out so that folks will, will really have that opportunity to, to know what we're doing. That's, I think, one of the best things that we can, we can kind of do. It's kind of that, that fear of doing the, the work, you know, in a, in the dark, and nobody sees the great stuff that's happening. I'll never forget when my, my wife told me, she said, I just didn't know that Bloomington was doing all this stuff, because she was living in Eagan before she moved here. So I'm really excited and looking forward to see what this will mean, if we're able to execute this well, and I have no doubt that we will be able to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember DeLisandro's point, in addition to what would we stop doing, what items do you see just being moved up to be more, more proactive? You gave the example of the zoning changes, and the reality is, is we probably did a lot of communication about that after we got feedback from residents and wanted to make sure they were informed about this. I see part of the concept here is, you know, we could have had that information to people six months prior to that first meeting, get them involved in the process early. So how much of this is, you know, additional work versus just shifting and being more proactive about that communication?
So, Councilmember, I would tell you that I think a lot of it is going to be shifting some of this work out to the departments, to say, and, and we have in the plan, very specifically, they have to begin to identify what are upcoming projects? What are things that are a year, two years out? What are things that we need to calendar and start working on those one-page communication plans now? So I think there will be a lot more proactive. And, and again, in every government, there are things that we just don't see or anticipate that, and we have to respond to. But the goal is that that becomes the 3%, not the 25%. So that, you know, we're, we're thinking more proactively ahead of things and trying to spread that out so that the ownership of that is from the departments. That does mean, though, you have to bring communications in early on. And that gives them an additional workload, because they have to come sit in meetings and go through, okay, what's the strategy? What are we doing? So there will be a lot more of communications and the community engagement integrating into the department processes. So I would hesitate to say that their workload will be any lighter. I think in some ways, to be more proactive may take more staff time. We're hoping there's some benefits for maybe not posting as often. I'm not sure those two things will equal out. I think it's still going to take additional work. I think the outcomes will be what you all have said we want to see. We want to see that, that our residents have an opportunity to see what's coming before we're at that point. That, and, and again, they still have the right to say, I choose to engage, as the manager mentioned, I, or I choose that I don't want to engage in this, but I know about it, and I get to make that choice as a resident. I think that's what people want to know.
And then just one comment on the qualitative indicators. It says the word residents a lot, and not once does it say businesses.
Thank you, we will be sure, because the businesses are included, and that's why there's those specific strategies about them, including a survey of businesses, because that's the, the heart of our economy, are those businesses. And what's interesting is, a couple of the business leaders that I talked to, the ones who are from Bloomington felt like they knew a lot, but those who were not from Bloomington didn't feel quite as engaged. And so I think that there is definitely some work for us to do to engage them more and to get more feedback from them, and then create those relationships. I think that's what they're looking for. I want a relationship so I know who's my person to call at the city, because that, that's meaningful to them. They might not need them for 11 months out of the year, but when they have a question, they want to know who's that person. So, thank you, the businesses will be included.
Thank you. And then my last one is, you know, I see, so the quantitative and the qualitative measurements, I saw goals kind of listed for each area, but the part that I'm not getting is, you know, how, how do we know if we're successful? What are the large goals? What does that look like to say, okay, we're doing this? How do we measure that? How do we know? How do future councils know that this, this is working? People are better informed earlier in the process, you know? Businesses are engaged, want to move and do more business in Bloomington here because they feel supported, they have that point of contact. How do we know it's working?
I don't think it's a perfect system, but I think surveys are the answer. In my work in local government, we surveyed people that came to every single thing. If you came to a potluck dinner at a neighborhood center, we had a one-page, you can't make it long, that said, how did you hear about it? And, and again, is that statistically valid? No, it's valid for the people who came to that event. But everything we do, we have to be asking people, what can you tell us? What kind of feedback? Because you all take part in that national survey, that is a statistically valid random sample survey that, that is designed to capture sentiment. And part of what we're trying to do is move the needle. When people say, do you, do you have civic pride for this community? We want to look at those numbers and see, did that go up? Did that go down? You know, what are we doing? And so it's, it's difficult. You all will receive feedback from, from residents as well. It's not statistically valid, it's people who know you and who felt comfortable saying. But I, my hope is that you begin to hear from other people saying, hey, I actually knew that was coming up. You're not the first person telling them, because they've seen it, and they've, they've seen it out there. In this government work, you know, we don't have Nielsen ratings for our, you know, government channel. What we know is that people say they like the TV broadcasting that they see on the government channel. So I think it's a matter of trying to figure out what's the best tool, and to measure those kind of like changes in attitude, typically, the only way I've seen that really work is through surveys.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Councilmember Nelson got me covered.
Okay. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Michelle, so much for being here. That was really great. I'm really excited to, to be able to communicate more, not just to Bloomington, but the, the whole state of Minnesota, that we're an awesome city. What I see here, a lot of things that are focused on the tools that we have today, how do we ensure that these recommendations are going to be future-proof, so that when new forms of communication, new forms of outreach come, we can continue to keep up with what's, what's changing technologically?
That is a great question. I, the topic that every government is talking about in every aspect is artificial intelligence. What does that mean? And, and again, I know some, some, some of us react with like, oh, my gosh, what does this mean? There are governments, I, I just was talking to a company, that their take, using artificial intelligence to take long police reports and create a summary. Now, the officer still has to review it and see if it was right, but they said, it's amazing how much friendlier and the language level is easier to understand through AI. You're absolutely right, there's going to be changes in technology that we have to stay on top of. When we talked about making sure staff was able to attend training, that is part of that. And again, the city does training throughout every department, but beyond AI, what's going to be the next thing? And that's the benefit of keeping your staff in the position to where they're staying on top of that, and trying to see what those opportunities are, and also understanding the, there's opportunities and then there's downsides. What about the ethics? And I would tell you, from a communication perspective, AI can be a little scary, because people can create things, as we've seen happen at the national level, where it could be your image and saying something that you never said. That's scary. How do we try to make sure we help our citizens understand how to know a fake from a real? I mean, there's a lot of things, and I would tell you, the technology today will be dramatically different in six months. So I think that's a great point. I think training is the key to keep your staff to where they're constantly learning and being prepared for that next thing. Beyond AI, that's the extent of my future forecasting, but I think that's going to become a very big issue in many aspects of local government.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
This is a, a separate question, probably for the city manager. I, I know in number eight here, we have a key recommendations from the social media audit, and I know Janine provided some information about that. What, what, what substantively are we going to get as it relates to that audit in terms of those recommendations? Are they going to be listed, like, are we going to know what our strategy is for each of the platforms and how they're going to work together? You know, that kind of thing. I, I think people, as, as you know, people were surprised by when we turned off the comments for some of our social media accounts. We didn't do it for all of them, so people had levers for that anyway, but I think people are asking, they just want to know, like, when are we going to get specific about what we are and not, what are we, what we are and what we're not going to do on which of the platforms, so they know where to go for the right information, and if, how they, how they can engage with the city, if that makes sense. Thanks.
Mayor and councilmembers, and Councilmember DeLisandro, we, Eric Hanssen had provided us with 13 thought starters from his audit, and so from that, and from all of the information that he gathered, and all of the information that we had from interviewing neighboring cities, from looking at the surveys and information, we'd put together, we've put together a plan, a communication, a digital communication strategic plan that we have, and right now we, we're looking at it with staff, we're sharing with all of our social media administrators. I mentioned we have 18 social media accounts, so we do have approved administrators besides communications who are doing posting on their accounts. And so we're taking a look at all of those thought starters and prioritizing those, similar to what we're doing with this, this plan that Michelle is presenting to you tonight, and to look at how we're going to do things differently. And we're starting with, we were waiting to present this plan together with this plan, because this is the overall plan, but our audit is looking at social media specifically and digital communication specifically, and looking at the different platforms and how we're communicating on those platforms, and what we can do for improvements, for looking at what meets the needs of the, of the employees in the city to get their information out to the community, what works for engagement, and looking at all of those thought starters, and then we have those recommendation and those activities underneath those, too.
And the timeline for that, roughly?
We have that.
Not trying to put you on.
Oh, yeah, we, oh, the timeline for the plan or to enact the plan?
The timeline for communicating to us, I guess, the plan.
Oh, okay. We have, we have the plan ready to go, so we can, we can share that plan with you.
Anything else? Very good. Ms. Hill, Ms. Bono, thank you very much. Very thought-provoking, very comprehensive, and I think very effective planning here. I'm looking forward to moving forward with this and, and seeing it implemented, so thank you so very much.
I just want to say, it was a great pleasure, show you this one, it was a really great pleasure to meet you all. One of the things that, that you love about a city is when people are passionate, and the elected leaders here are passionate, the staff is passionate. I would say, we heard the same thing from the residents. So you have a great city, and it's great to see that, if somebody said they liked the good news. The good news is, people love this city, and they just want to see it get better. So it was a real pleasure to get to work with you all. Thank you.
Nice of you to say, thank you so very much. Councilmember Nelson, something to add?
Yeah, just a quick question to follow up on Councilmember DeLisandro's point. In terms of the social media plan, will there be a presentation to council that's available to the public so that they're able to give us feedback as well to help, help us form our thoughts about that?
We could put a presentation together, certainly, and, and get on the agenda and just go into detail. We, for the sake of time tonight, and with Michelle's plan, we didn't go into all of the details, but we certainly can put that together.
Very good. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I just want to clarify, kind of going back to my first question. So by hearing this tonight, just to be clear with the community, we're not approving additional staff, we're not approving additional budget. We are, Boa, we are approving is continuing to move this forward, adopt the things that aren't going to require additional staff time, maybe look at other things that can be done differently to reduce the amount of resources that go toward those, and that when we go into the budgeting season officially, that we'll be, we'll be asked to consider whether or not we want to increase staffing levels based on whatever additional priorities are not being, that are not being incorporated because of limits and capacity. Okay, thank you.
Good summary, Councilmember, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 2.4 on our agenda, this is our external auditor's report on our 2022 annual financial report. And Ms. Amy Sevigny, our deputy finance officer, is here to
Thank you.
kick this off.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It is my pleasure to introduce Andy Herring tonight, who will provide the results of our 2022 external audit. Andy worked on the Red Path team as a manager with Bloomington when they last audited us five years ago. Upon Red Path being awarded the contract again for 2022 through 2026, Andy returned, leading their team as the partner. So welcome, Andy.
Good evening, Mr. Herring.
All right, good evening, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Once again, my name's Andy Herring, I'm here to present the results of the 2022 audit for the city of Bloomington. And when I, when I speak about the, the audit I'm referring to, we audited the operations of the city, the HRA, and the Port Authority, so it includes all three entities. And I'll also just clarify, we, you know, we work with the finance department as we conduct the audit, but we're really working for the city council, so if you have any questions after this presentation, or anytime, feel free to reach out. So as part of the audit, we issue five reports. The first is the opinion on the financial statements, a report on internal controls, a report on Minnesota legal compliance, a report on federal compliance, and then a letter to those charged with governance, or the city council. A snapshot of the results of the audit, an unmodified opinion, I have one financial I have one financial statement, uh, finding relating to internal controls to report that I'll comment here on in a minute. No compliance findings relating to Minnesota legal compliance or federal. And then just standard communications in the governance letter. A look back at 2021, the city once again received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, which it's, which it has, uh, received over the past fifty-one years. Um, and so that certificate demonstrates comprehensive, transparent and consistent financial reporting. The first report that we issue, our opinion on the financial statements and a recap of the audit process. The audit began back in December with planning and performing preliminary procedures. And then there's a period of several months where staff is, in addition to their day-to-day duties, closing the books on 2022, preparing for the audit. Um, and that's an extensive process to prepare for the audit. So there's a lot that goes into that. And then by April twenty-fourth is when we started our audit. And then staff prepares the financial statements. I think it's about a two-hundred-and-thirty-page document. Um, so there's quite a bit of effort that goes into that as well. And the first full draft of that was provided May nineteenth and we issued our audit reports June twenty-sixth, or June sixteenth. So what do we do? We determine that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and are free of material misstatement. How do we do it? Uh, one, occurrence. So the, the items that are listed in the financial statements such as assets and revenues, we're verifying those are the assets and the revenues of the city. On the flip side, completeness, we're thinking about should everything or has everything been included in the financial statements? That should be, such as liabilities and expenses. Are all the liabilities and expenses of the city included in the financial statements? And then we're also looking at accuracy, cutoff, cutoff classification, making sure amounts are recorded at the correct year, in the correct accounts, those sorts of things. So the results, an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements. And that's the highest level of opinion the city can receive. The next report, a report on internal controls over financial reporting. So we gain an understanding of the city's internal controls, examples of controls, approval over disbursements, approval over the bank reconciliation, ideal segregation of duties, which is ensuring that no one person has too much responsibility in any given area. You know, making sure there's a s- system of checks and balances in there. And also a, a review of financial information to detect any errors. And that's really where the finding kind of triggers from or evolves from. Noted one finding related to two items, uh, we detected during the audit. Financial statement corrections is the name of the finding. It's the most common finding we give as auditors and it really means we detected something that, um, staff didn't prior to the audit, so it was corrected during the audit. The two items, there was an assessment that was adopted in two thousand and eighteen that the entire amount of the assessment as far as revenue should have been recorded at that time. But since then, it's been recorded. The revenue that's been recorded is the amount that's due every year. Um, so it's really a timing of the revenue. You know, everyone has been billed correctly over the past four or five years. Um, but again, it's just the timing of when that's revenue's been recorded on the city's books. The second item is with the HRA's Opportunity Housing Fund. There's a receivable from a developer and receipts started to began being received in two thousand and twenty-one. And that receivable balance was reduced for the entire amount received. And there's actually a interest component of that payment that was being received that should have been coded to interest income rather than reducing the principal and the amount of the loan. Um, so we corrected that. Again, the correct amount was received. It was just the accounting for that. So a couple of corrections, uh, not all that uncommon to have corrections during the audit, but they're fixed now and we can move forward. The next report, a report on Minnesota legal compliance. The state auditor issues a guide of seven sections that we're required to complete as part of the audit. You can see the seven sections listed there. Um, so there's a large variety of statutes the city must follow, as you're familiar with. Um, so we're testing for a variety of items. Um, one of items for depositories of public funds. We're, we're testing to make sure the city has sufficient collateral on its deposits. You know, a month or two ago, we heard of a few significant bank failures. Well, if the city's banks were ever to fail, uh, where they have their money, the city has a secondary level of insurance or collateral on those funds. So we're testing to make sure that the city has that, um, extra level of insurance, really. And it does. There's also statutes relating to bidding and when you issue debt and tax increment and, uh, all, all kinds of different areas that the city is involved with. The results, no compliance findings. The next, a report on federal compliance, also known as a single audit, which is required when the city or any entity expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal expenditures. So this is more of a compliance audit to make sure the city is expending those funds in accordance with the federal requirements. So as part of that audit, we tested two programs, the Section Eight vouchers program and the American Rescue Plan Act dollars or ARPA dollars. So we gained an understanding of the controls over how that money is spent. Uh, we tested a sample of federal expenditures and we, we considered whether any control deficiencies were detected when conducting those tests and no findings were detected. Um, lastly, the letter to those charged with governance highlights that there was one significant new standard implemented in two thousand and twenty-two, um, following leases. And that really resulted in a lease receivable being recorded on the city's, um, financial statements that hadn't been recorded in the past. And that's the lease of cell tower antenna space. And just in the future, there's the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They're, they're always coming up with additional standards to follow. There's another one here in two thousand and three relating to information technology subscription arrangements. There's more on the horizon for two thousand and twenty-four. So it's a constant learning that, uh, staff must go through to be able to keep up with these standards. There are a few accounting estimates in the financial statements relating to the net pension liability, um, one relating to these leases I just discussed. I'm happy to report that there were no difficulties encountered during the audit or disagreements with management. Everyone we worked with was well-prepared and cooperative during the audit. And lastly, there's a section, uh, of corrected and uncorrected misstatements. There were no significant uncorrected items. And then just the two that I mentioned, um, that we detected that were corrected. And finally, a last few slides relating to the financial summary for two thousand and twenty-two. The city's general fund called for a use of budget reserves of about two-point-two million. The actual results, the general fund, um, balance increased about two-point-three million. But it's important to remember that those, that increase in fund balance is needed for a variety of topics or variety of, uses such as reserve requirements, encumbrances, budget carryovers. So that's, it's, um, there's necessary plans for that money. And, uh, a five-year history of the general fund balance. As you know, the, the council's, the city's primary funding source is property taxes, which is received around the midway point of the year. So the city needs to have substantial cash and fund balance reserves on hand to begin in the year. And that's really what this slide shows, is the, um, and receiving that money about halfway through the year makes sense with the fund balance as a percentage of ensuing year's appropriations there. Um, so to have fund balance on hand to fund the first six months of operations to be able to pay the bills. And look at the enterprise funds. I know there's a lot of numbers up there, but the, the first line, the cash flows from operating activities really summarizes the, um, the cash that those a- activities are generating. Um, user charges, less operating costs. But then what you need to keep in mind with those, um, user charges or operating, um, cash needs is, is meant to be used for, um, such as a purchase of capital or fixed assets. You have to have cash for your debt service and a variety of other topics. Um, and that, that, the real point of this slide is to show how the, the purchase of the capital assets and those capital needs can vary significantly from year to year. Um, and that's a substantial driver of how that cash is used. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and also next steps would be a request for the council to, uh, make a motion to accept the two thousand and twenty-two audit reports, but be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Council questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we only have the one lease in the city of Bloomington that was impacted by the change?
There only one kind of lease, but there's numerous, um, cell tower leases, yeah.
Okay. So we don't have any property or anything like that? Someone's leasing from us and/or we're leasing?
There's smaller leases such as a, may at least copiers or a copier, but nothing substantial, no.
Okay. Yeah, my understanding, those did, were not part of the rule changes, is that right? It was only the more, the larger leases?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, and then on the finding regarding the developer payment. So if I understand correctly, the revenue was wrong. We didn't book interest revenue. And then the asset was wrong. We took all of the payment off of the principal amount and due. Is that accurate? Um, so I got two questions there. Would we have collected all of the money or would we have stopped billing when it showed that there was zero due? That may not be for you.
I'm, I, I know there's a payment schedule associated with that. And I can't remember how many years, but I'm assuming that invoice would have gone out to the developer for the entirety of the payment schedule. It's my assumption. Now, I can't predict into the future, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see Ms. Economy Scholler coming forward.
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, this is on the housing trust fund, um, our first original loan agreements with Aon. And they made their payments on schedule. It was just the accounting of when that payment came in. They put it all to principal instead of principal and interest.
Okay. So you're confident we would have collected it?
Yeah.
Based on schedule, okay. And then, um, based on the finding, did we review any other loans in the city, either the HRA, the port, Bloomington itself, to see if there are other similar accounting? If, if we coded it one way on this loan, why would we have coded it differently on other loans?
Yes, they were all reviewed. Um, this was the exception. So this was
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I must say, every time we get this presentation and we get this yearly presentation, I'm just, I'm amazed at, first of all, the breadth and depth of the information that is gathered and the complexity of the information and, and the detail pulled together by our auditors and, and Red Path in this case. And year after year, at most, there are two, one or two technical issues that need to be corrected and, and are, and we move forward. And I think that says so much about our, our finance staff, the work that they put in, the, the detail that they follow just so meticulously. And I think it, it, uh, it helps us more than anything, um, just maintain that, that confidence and that understanding that, yes, the, on an eighty-six million dollar general fund, the city of Bloomington is doing a darn good job with it. It really are. And, uh, it says a lot about staff once again. Um, appreciate the work that goes in, appreciate the work that goes into auditing and making sure that, uh, that, that all, uh, it all shakes out. And again, your level of detail. When you start looking at leases of cell towers, I mean, my goodness, we're getting, we're getting down in the weeds there. And it's, but I appreciate that, appreciate the work that you put in, appreciate the work that you do with our staff to ensure that this is accurate and, and, uh, does what it needs to do. And I think I'm, I'm, I'm so very happy once again that we made it through with this audit with a couple of technical, uh, corrections, but corrections that we're able to make and we're, and end up with a clean, a clean audit once again. Councilmember Delisandro?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. If, um, if there aren't any other comments, I'd be happy to make the motion.
I, Councilmember Delisandro?
Wonderful.
Yes.
Just in the interest of keeping us moving. Uh, I move to, uh, accept the city's annual comprehensive financial report for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Lowman to accept the city's annual comprehensive financial report for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Mr. Herring, thank you so very much. Uh, extend our thanks to the folks at Red Path for the work done on this. Greatly appreciated. And once again, thanks to our finance staff for the outstanding work done on this. Once again, greatly appreciated. Thanks so much.
You're welcome, and I'll see you next year.
Very good. The final item under our introductory items is item two point five. And this is an assessment on the state of homelessness in the city of Bloomington. And Erica Coleman, our HRA administrator, is going to kick us off on this. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, so I'll get right to it. So, talking about the state of homelessness assessment and what better ways to ground you in the housing continuum, this graphic that I like to use, but I like to focus your attention on the, uh, area that would relate specifically to experiencing homelessness. And that is the first three items of this continuum, where it is homelessness, which is outside unsheltered, emergency shelter and transitional housing. What I added here, um, was just different types of situations that would contribute and/or, um, allow for these situations to exist and for people to be able to move from this situation into what may be considered for them a better sit- situation at that time. I also want to be clear, I use the terminology experiencing homelessness because we are talking about people. They are not their situation or their circumstances, so we will talk as experiencing homelessness. And we will not refer to people that may be experiencing that as homeless. So what have we done? Well, in two thousand and twenty, we had something called a pandemic, um, that has continued in some shape or form, but you also hired me. So in two thousand and twenty, I did start during that pandemic as the HRA administrator. Prior to me starting, there were things that were happening though. Um, I want to highlight that we did receive a specific allocation of community development block grant coronavirus di- dollars. Uh, the interim administrator at that time allocated those funds for housing assistance, and that was with FEEP. Um, we had hotel usage coordination as there was information around the hotels being used for congregate living facilities with supported services due to the pandemic. Um, people could not be very close to each other. And the planning division, um, did start doing some engagement around the needs based on that hotel usage coordination. And so moving into two thousand and twenty-one, this body did pass Resolution two thousand and twenty-one eleven. This was the temporary pandemic housing permit. This was a better coordinated effort, understanding and information sharing around the use of those hotels and the needs as it did pull on our public safety, public health and other, um, services of the city. The HRA also did a strategic plan. The reason this is highlighted is because in that strategic plan, we added homelessness as an activity for services and resources. Um, we also received more funding. This body approved using CDBG CV funding for specific street outreach for people experiencing homelessness, rental and ownership housing assistance, utility assistance and housing navigators to get people to those resources and services as needed. We instituted a cross-departmental response. Uh, this included fire, public works, police, environmental health, planning, HRA, multiple departments and divisions, and this was working with street outreach in order to respond. I don't think people understand or know that when some of our public work staff may be cutting the grass in some of the open city-owned areas, they may come, come across people that may be experiencing homelessness, maybe in tents. Um, or that are parks maintenance, uh, people. So you don't think about that, but they are also considered frontline in seeing some of these, um, things. We provide a housing resource pop-up at, um, the previous hotel owned Days Inn, uh, for people that were experiencing it. And this body approved American Rescue Plan Act funding for homelessness response and prevention. Takes us into two thousand and twenty-two where we did participate in the point-in-time count coordination. This is something that's done by Hennepin County as, um, required at the federal level. Historically, Bloomington was not Historically, Bloomington was not necessarily participating as actively in that count, so we worked on that. We have a partnership with Bloomington Public Schools. We did do nine emergency vouchers. This comes from the housing resource pop-up, started specific population vouchers, foster youth independence, and veterans. We had applied for additional funding from DED, Department of Employment Economic Development, the State Department. This funding went specifically for housing assistance and food shelf assistance, and then we expanded organizational support through the HRA assessment. So now we're in 2023. What do we have? The HRA will not be doing another strategic plan by itself because we are a part of Bloomington tomorrow together. That's number one. We have representation on the heading Home Hennepin Executive Committee. This is the executive board for the Continuum of Care Plan, which is focused strictly on the supports and services of for those experiencing homelessness through the county. So Bloomington is the only suburb with representation on that body. We have partnerships with Hennepin Streets to Housing Team. We have monthly resources, coordinated resource for singles. This is single adults, and this is a monthly pop-up that happens at FEEP in Bloomington. We have county, city, and transit coordination. We have relaunched our Bloomington Housing Action Team to focus on the whole housing continuum. We have been doing eviction prevention clinics and resource fairs. This just happened this past Saturday, which was successful. This is just getting the information. And we have done a state of homelessness assessment, which you approved in the ARP funding. So the assessment, the purpose is for the assessment to identify existing gaps and possible duplications of services in the overall social safety net relative to the community's desire to develop a comprehensive response to homelessness. The firm that was selected was Analytic Insight. This was done through a RFP process. This is a full-service research firm that is woman-owned and small business. It has 15 years of experience providing strategic planning, program evaluation, and public opinion research, local, state, and federal levels, and it is led by President Dr. Amy Flowers, who has over 20 years' experience in comprehensive needs analysis, assessments and gap analysis, as well as complex statistical analysis. And so I'd like to present to you Dr. Amy Flowers.
Good evening, Dr. Flowers, welcome.
Good evening. To advance. Okay, thank you. And thank you for having me. Thank you for your willingness to address this important issue. As homelessness is growing across the country, it's important to make sure that it's brief, nonrecurring, and rare, and the actions that the city are taking is taking are moving it toward that direction. My presentation this evening starts with the foundation of the current state of homelessness in Bloomington. So I'm going to present to you some data about the current state of what the problem is of homelessness. I have a few recommendations and next steps to offer for your consideration, and I believe Erica also has done some work on this topic. So starting out with the current state of homeless homelessness here in Bloomington, there are a few data sources that I wanted to explain before we get started. I did some key informant interviews with people who provide services here in Bloomington and also in Hennepin County. Most of the analysis, though, is based on secondary data that's available, that includes the census, some HUD data, the HMIS, which is a system of collecting information about the people who are receiving services, who are either experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Erica mentioned the PIT count, the Point-in-Time Count, which is a count that's done of the number of people experiencing homelessness on a single night in January each year in the county, and also the homelessness inventory count, which is a corollary to the PIT count that examines the number of beds that are available for those experiencing homelessness. So starting out with the housing inventory count, the number of beds that are available in Hennepin County, because there there is no current shelter in the city of Bloomington, but there are 11,000, over 11,000 year-round beds that include 1,400 roughly family units with about 5,000 beds available for families experiencing homelessness. There are over 800 beds for chronic homelessness, 763 for veterans, and 645 for youth. And what we want to do is compare that to the number of people who are experiencing homelessness to see if those are adequate. And these numbers, this is for the PIT count for Hennepin County again, because we don't have numbers specific to the city of Bloomington. So overall, in the county, there are about 2,678 people experiencing homelessness total. Among those, 685 are under the age of 18. And in this slide, I've broken down by the number of people in emergency shelters, transitional housing, and those who are unsheltered. And so as you can see, among those who are in emergency shelters, 30% are under the age of 18, as compared to the total, which is just 25%. So youth are actually overrepresented in the emergency shelters, whereas if you look at those who are experienced who are unsheltered, just 1% are under the age of 18. So if you're under the age of 18 and experiencing homelessness, it's likely that you're either in an emergency shelter in the county or in transitional housing, but less likely that you would be unsheltered. In contrast, those over the age of 24, 90%, they make up 90% of the unsheltered homeless population. So that tends to be a little bit of an older population. In terms of race and ethnicity, there's some really stark differences to observe. African-Americans comprised 88% of those experiencing homelessness in the county, even though they only amount to about 15% of the population overall. So they're tremendously overrepresented in the homelessness population. Among those African-Americans experiencing homelessness, they're also much more likely to be unsheltered, as compared to just 25% of Asians, 20% of those who are multiracial, 22% of Hispanics, and just 1% of the unsheltered homeless population are white. And then overall, 9% of those experiencing homelessness are Hispanic in the county, a slight overrepresentation compared to their population overall. Next, looking at the HMIS data, now we're looking, we're turning from looking at the population of people experiencing homelessness in the county in general to those who are receiving services. And so the Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS, collects data on the provision of housing and services to those who are experiencing homelessness and also those who are at risk of homelessness. It's overseen by HUD and the Department of Health and Human Services and the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, but it's conducted locally by the COC, the Continuum of Care for the county. So in Hennepin County, the COC documented 14,000 households receiving homelessness services, which was a slight increase over 2020 numbers. 172 individuals, among those in the Hennepin County system, 172 individuals listed their last city of residence as being Bloomington. And so that's how we were able to identify the needs of the city of Bloomington is by looking at those in the county system who say that they were last residents of the city of Bloomington. So in these next slides, these are looking at just those individuals who said that their last residence was the city of Bloomington and are receiving services in the county. So first, in regard to gender, almost half of those experiencing homelessness who are from Bloomington are female. There's about a 5% female transgender population, and the remainder were male. That's a large proportion, though, of people experiencing homelessness who are female. And when you look at domestic violence, you see that almost half of those experiencing homelessness say that they have also been a survivor of domestic violence. So there's a strong relationship between those two. In Hennepin County, the people receiving services there who were formerly Bloomington residents, about 8% were Hispanic. And I have to put on my glasses to see some of these numbers now. The black or African-American population was about 50%, again, a great overrepresentation compared to the population. And I have some of the census numbers just for comparison purposes here next. Among the people receiving services, 28% were white, compared to 69% in the county When it comes to age and disability, almost half of the people receiving services who are from Bloomington had some kind of a physical disability. And with regard to age at entry to the services that they were receiving, under 18 was 28%. So almost 1 in 3 started receiving services related to homelessness when they were under the age of 18. It's also worth noting that over the age of 55, there are 13%. That's almost 1 in 7 of the people in Hennepin County from Bloomington experiencing homelessness were over the age of 55. In terms of the services being received, 24% were receiving emergency shelter, which would indicate a strong need for emergency services for emergency shelter here in the city of Bloomington as well. Permanent supportive housing and permanent housing with services together make about 40% of the services that are being received. So again, very strong need related to housing, especially housing supported by additional services to help make sure that people are able to to maintain that housing and that it's enduring for them. Homelessness prevention was also needed for about 12% of the people. Prior to entry into the Hennepin County shelter, most people, 30%, came from another emergency shelter, including the hotel motel paid for with the ES voucher, which the city of Bloomington had been providing previously. 20% are almost or about 1 in 5 came from a place not meant for habitation. In other words, they were in an unsheltered environment. 12% were in rentals previously to being homeless, so that they had either other ongoing housing subsidies to help them, that's that 12%, but another 10% were in a rental with no ongoing housing subsidy. So together, those two are about 25% of those experiencing homelessness who had previously been in a rental situation of their own. 20% were unsheltered, 30% had previous shelter or a hotel voucher. So this really shows that some some of the the stages of homelessness, if someone is in danger in is vulnerable to homelessness, it can often be stopped with a very small amount of money. If someone is in danger of eviction from an apartment or is losing the services that keep them in their stable housing, at that point, intervention at that point can be very effective and very low cost. Just a few months later, after that person has been evicted and has experienced homelessness, they tend to snowball because the homelessness itself is a very stressful and difficult thing for them. They tend to lose possessions, they lose assets in other ways, community members who might be helpful to them. And at that point, it can be very costly and very difficult to get them back into stable housing. So whenever possible, it's best if intervention can take place before homelessness occurs. In terms of the needs of Bloomington residents who are there in the shelters, emergency shelter was the most common need at 24%. 1 in 4 needed emergency shelter. There are often barriers to achieving emergency shelter. Sometimes shelters are run by faith-based organizations that make requirements on people to attend services that they're unwilling or unable to attend. People sometimes have substance use problems, and not all shelters will accept them under those conditions. There's a movement called Housing First that says that you need to address the housing issue before you can address your substance use needs, that it's very difficult for someone who's experiencing homelessness at that time to address something like a substance use need or even to to make access of of mental health services that are needed until they have a stable place to live. Permanent supportive housing and permanent housing with services accounted for a large proportion of the needs that were there, and homelessness prevention for more than 1 in 10 people. Now turning to look at Bloomington residents who are not homeless, who are renters currently. Gross rent as a percentage of household income, or GRAPPI, as it's often called, is a good measure of someone's stability in a rental environment. And there's a broadly accepted rule that 30% of a person's household income should, no more than 30%, should go to pay for their rent. Over 30%, they're often in danger of getting behind in rent and then eventually being evicted. And even the 30% rule has come under a lot of criticism lately because it doesn't account for some of the inflation that we've experienced in the in recent years for student loan debt that is starting to recur again as student loans become due again, and for rising healthcare costs, which with Medicaid redeterminations is also something people are going to be losing their Medicaid in the future, and that's also an additional cost that will take away from their ability to keep up with rent. So when we look at the number of renters in Bloomington who are paying 30% or more, we see that almost half of Bloomington renters pay more than 30% of their income in rent, which is a tremendously dangerous place to be. 40% pay 35% of their income or more, and that's their household income. When we look at Bloomington's veterans, we also see a little bit of a vulnerability in this area. So Bloomington tends to have veterans who are a little bit older than the national average, and you can see that by the wars that they participated in. In the Gulf, in Iraq wars, there's a lower-than-average number of veterans in Bloomington. But when you look at World War II veterans, almost three times the national average. It's a smaller percentage, but it's it's quite a bit higher than than national average. Likewise, Korea War and Vietnam veterans are higher than their proportion in the U.S. generally. So the veteran population is also older and more vulnerable to homelessness. Some of the quick facts, the American Community Survey facts that I thought were interesting with regard to this issue. The median household income in Bloomington is about $80,000. Median gross rent, 1,300. Median gross rent, $1,300 a month. About 8% of Bloomington residents currently live in poverty, and 7% live in occupied units who have no transportation available. And transportation is very important, too, to be able to maintain an occupation that pays for your rent, as well as to access services that may be needed, including health services. The rental vacancy rate is 3.5%, which is very low. It's a tight rental market out there. So if you are in stable housing, you know, it's, it's important to hold on to it because it's hard to find a new place to live. 8%, almost 1 in 10, people with a disability under the age of 65 years old. Again, people with disabilities are often vulnerable to homelessness. 2% of occupied housing units lack complete kitchen facilities, and almost 2% lack complete plumbing facilities. So again, these are people who are living really in a substandard environment and are vulnerable to losing even that much shelter that they have. So a few recommendations. The first is along the lines of prevention. As I mentioned, it's much easier, it's cheaper, and it's, it's better for the person if homelessness can be prevented. And one of the ways to prevent it is through preventing evictions, offering services, legal services and other aid to people who are in danger of being evicted. Rent stabilization is also important. As rents are going higher and higher, wages are not keeping up with them, and it leaves many people vulnerable to homelessness. An emergency shelter could be very helpful in the city of Bloomington. One of the things that came out in some of the interviews that I did, and that often communities, it's a concern often with communities, they think if they build an emergency shelter, people will be attracted from other areas to come to the shelter. But the truth is, when someone is experiencing homelessness, they often have family or other resources available to them. That family and, and the support network that they have is also often very much on the line in terms of poverty. So they may not be able to offer someone, you know, a son or a brother or a friend, they may not be able to offer housing to that person, to say, "You can come and stay with me." But they can often offer, or do often offer, food, for example, or a ride to get somewhere when they're needed. So people who are experiencing homelessness, especially those who dip in and out of homelessness, who become homeless briefly, those kinds of resources are very important to them. And people experiencing homelessness often do not want to go to a different community. They want to stay where they are. So even someone here in Bloomington who has to go to Minneapolis to a shelter in order to, to have a place to sleep at night, that often means they're giving up resources here in the community that would otherwise be available to them. So an emergency shelter that's in a location that's familiar and that's available to the people experiencing homelessness is very important. The low or no barrier aspect is also very important. If the barriers are too great, then people may not use the shelter. It may be more convenient or easier for them, or just more possible for them if something like a criminal conviction is going to keep them out of being able to access that shelter. And then lastly, the linkage to services is very important in this area, too. That emergency shelter is important, but it's not enough for most people. They need to be placed into permanent supportive housing, and many need additional services to be able to access that and to make it work for them. Transportation is also very important, and some communities offer free fare routes, where a bus or a transportation service will be free for people when it goes to the central area where services are available, so that people can get from outlying areas to be able to access the services that they need. Partnerships with other cities and services is also important, so that people who do need to go to Minneapolis to access a shelter there can get back and forth, can come back to see their mother or someone else who's here in the community who might be able to help them. And likewise, partnerships with Bloomington businesses. Businesses often have a stake in homelessness, too. Sometimes I've heard from owners of businesses who've known employees who've become homeless as they're working, because part-time work or low-wage work isn't always enough to sustain someone in housing. Also, businesses have an interest in not having their customers encounter people experiencing homelessness, and they're often, they can often be engaged in the fight to make sure that homelessness is brief and non-reoccurring. And then lastly, advocacy efforts. You have to bring the community along with you. And as the communication consultant was explaining, it's very important for the city to communicate with residents about the importance of services addressing homelessness, about having people understand who is experiencing homelessness in the community, and that it's not always people who are different from them, people who are having substance use problems. It also includes many people, such as the renters, who are vulnerable to homelessness. It also, that kind of advocacy can help build support for an emergency shelter. And lastly, as an advocacy effort, in Minneapolis, there's something called the Stable Homes, Stable Schools effort, which identifies through the schools, children and family who are at risk of homelessness, and connects them with rent stabilization, with eviction prevention services, and other services to help prevent homelessness. But they go through the schools in order to identify families that are vulnerable to homelessness. And it's been a very effective program as well. So I think that's the last of my slides. My clicker isn't, oh, no, here we go. There's a few next steps. Identification of some action items. So for the city, as, in terms of next steps, identifying what it is that you want to do in terms of prevention of homelessness and emergency shelter, transportation, and the other items that are needed involves looking at the priorities and the feasibility timeline of the items in order to do some strategic planning to make sure that homelessness is very rare in the city and very brief when it does happen. And so thank you very much for your concern in this issue, and I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Flowers.
Thank you. I just have a couple more things based on Dr. Flowers' presentation and the landscape we have here in Bloomington of the work that is and has been done. I have some recommendations. So recommending that we align with Hennepin County Office of Housing Stability. This is our partner. So it's aligning in our partnership under the Continuum of Care Plan that they do have, and applying that so that there may be a Bloomington-specific congregate living facility. What does that look like for Bloomington and how will that operate and be managed? One of the things in aligning with our Hennepin County partner is that they receive funding for these types of services and activities, but they also have a network of partnerships for service providers, because in looking at a congregate living facility, who is going to operate it? And what does that cost? Let alone, where is it going to be located? Is it gonna have to be built? Is it gonna have to be retrofitted? All those things need to happen in partnership with our partner. In addition to that, a drop-in center, outreach, resources, warming and cooling locations. Warming and cooling locations and resources are already led by Hennepin County, but making sure that we have those specific locations and the communication of those locations right here in Bloomington. And a drop-in center would be something that is new. Expand our response and prevention services. This is on work that is already being done. I mentioned earlier about our Foster Youth Independence and our HUD-VAS vouchers, which are veterans. These are population-specific housing choice vouchers. I recommend we expand them where feasible. Where does the "where feasible" come from? Because the funding comes directly from HUD. And so that is working with HUD to make sure that we can get more funding for more population-specific vouchers. Transitional housing. We actually do have some transitional housing in the city of Bloomington through some partnerships with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for different populations, survivors, different things like that. Where can we expand transitional housing opportunities for those types of operations? As well as continue to work towards our deeply affordable, this is 30% area median income or below, and long-term homelessness units. These are special units, they're called LTH for short, that come with funding and supportive services that are integrated into new and/or existing multifamily buildings. We have some. How can we get more? Continue and expand our eviction and foreclosure prevention resources and services. This is education, this is funding, this is connection to resources and information. Lot of times, it's information. Lot of people don't know what they don't know, and they don't know their rights. And then Bloomington Public Schools collaboration. We are already collaborating very well with Bloomington Public Schools on temporary emergency rehousing efforts, and there are opportunities that we are speaking with Bloomington Public Schools and our partner in Hennepin County about other types of programs for rental assistance that is specific to Bloomington Public School students, families that are at risk of homelessness. Then implementation. This is immediate action steps that I'm recommending. Transportation services and our support for those that are experiencing homelessness in Bloomington. While we work through other things, who can we partner with, communicate with, and coordinate with on making sure that those that are experiencing homelessness in Bloomington, sadly, because we don't have it here, but they need to be able to get transported to different locations where they can get resources and/or shelter? That is just the reality, and that is someplace that we can do something about. And then advocacy and information sharing. This is immediate, but it's also ongoing. Continuing to share the information about the state of homelessness in Bloomington, work with other partners on different studies and different things that are happening to make sure that we are included in these counts. But then also, there was a billion-dollar housing bill passed at the state. Little piece of that that I saw in the explanation included homelessness. What does that mean, and how can we make sure that either Hennepin County or us are able to apply some of those supports and resources for people here in Bloomington? And so with that, I will say that my recommendations align with the strategic plan that you all passed, that I said the HRA won't have another one, known as Bloomington Tomorrow Together, that has the mission statement of cultivating and enduring a remarkable community where people want to be. And these recommendations align with cultivating and enduring a remarkable community where people can be. And they align with the strategic objective number two, where we will achieve significant improvement in the indices measuring the community's environmental, individual health, and strategy number three, that we will identify and align efforts across organizations in the community to leverage, develop, and maximize assets to achieve mutually beneficial outcomes. And with that, we can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Dr. Flowers, thank you so much. Council, questions? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you. Thank you for the thorough presentation. It's really nice to meet you, doctor. May I start with just a couple of definitional questions, because there are a couple of terms in here that I personally probably didn't know. I apologize if I'm taking time away. But the difference, or a definition of the difference between transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and permanent housing with services?
Yes. Thank you for the question, Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, members of the council. So transitional housing is just that. It is housing while somebody's coming out of a particular situation where they will stay in this transitional type of community before moving on to a permanent situation. So ideas of transitional housing could be those that are survivors of domestic violence, those that are in re-entry. They can enter into transitional housing before completely integrating back into society. Then you said permanent...
Supportive housing.
Permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is that somebody typically, they can live on their own, but they need the supports ongoing. It doesn't matter, they can be individuals living on their own, but there's supports that need to, whether it's mental health, whether it is physical health, whether it is neurodiverse, those are permanent supportive housing. And so you'll find that populations that need permanent supportive housing, if they lose a caretaker, or if they lose somebody, they're more likely to be at risk of homelessness and harder to get back on their feet because they need that ongoing services no matter what. So if their Medicaid or different things get messed up, they're the ones that are a higher-risk population, so they need permanent supportive housing. And then the third one?
Was permanent housing with services.
Yep. So permanent housing with services may not be services that are ongoing 24/7 all the time. Maybe I just need this right now to get over it. So that could be somebody that's elderly, somebody that may have a short-term disability. It's things like that that would be permanent housing with services, and it may not be live-in. It could be more like a community environment where there may be an office and they can go get that, but it's not necessarily as intense as permanent supportive housing.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Okay. So I had a question about some of the data that we saw. One was, you mentioned that of the 14,000 households that were identified in the one study, 172 individuals identified themselves as having lived in Bloomington most recently, that was their last address. That number seems like a very small percentage of that total. I'm assuming that we should make some assumptions that how many, like what percentage are not counted in that, or maybe their last residency was Minneapolis because that's where they went for service, but they came from here, like, so their second or third prior address would have been a Bloomington community address. Is that a fair assumption to make? And how would you look at that number, then, if you were making those assumptions?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, members of the council. So it does seem low because we don't have services. And so the question, I believe, is your last stable address. And so they're providing a ZIP code. But if they were doubled up, or if they had to move around and try and find, so a hotel's not a stable address. And so we do know that for years, hotels in Bloomington have been used for people that have been experiencing homelessness. And so because they have to go out of the city, even though Bloomington may be home, they have to go out of the city to get support and services and/or shelter, they may not list Bloomington as the most recent, but a lot more people probably are from Bloomington. And I will say, this information came forward in 2021, I think it was, when I was speaking with service providers, in particular the YMCA and others, and they were like, "Oh, Bloomington, there's many people," but because they have to leave to get help, they don't identify it as a last-known address for the HMIS system. But if you start to talk with people, you find out there's a lot more that actually are from Bloomington. Maybe raised, they're from Bloomington.
Right. Okay, my, my last question, then, is, do we have, are any of our hotels currently being used to support folks who are experiencing homelessness? I know, I feel like over the wintertime, we did have one, one group of folks that were at the Holiday Inn. Is that continuing today?
I will have to check into that for you, because it's not something that would be city-led.
Right.
So I would have to check into that.
I assume it's with our partner, Hennepin County.
If they are.
Okay, very good. Okay, yeah, if you could let me know, I'm just, because what I'm trying to draw the correlation of is, you know, are those folks oftentimes, like, do we have a sense for the, the folks that are from Bloomington that are also using Bloomington hotels, to your point, either, you know, as an emergency shelter or for, for one other... or for one other reason, a transitional housing or, you know, item or whatever? It doesn't sound like we can get to that data explicitly, but I didn't know if maybe that particular population that was most recently at the Holiday Inn, could, we could identify them as, what percentage of them would identify as Bloomington, you know, born and read, born and raised or whatever? Yeah.
I would have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Lowman, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a similar question because I think that the school district tracks students who are experiencing homelessness. And I think you actually presented this number at some point within the last probably year, that they were at about three hundred. And so then I kind of was wondering then, you know, if some of those students, some of the families ended up in Minneapolis or St. Paul, but, I mean, some may have moved south of the metro or south of Hennepin County, right, in Carver or Scott County. And so would that also be a number that we need to take into consideration? Even if we can't get identifying information and kind of find out more details? But I did also feel like the number seemed a little low based on just knowing how many students experiencing homelessness were tracked by the school district. And then I know even the school district believes that's an undercount because that's only when they find out, right? So.
So, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Carter. So I do have a response for that. Number one, Bloomington Public Schools district-wide are dealing with over six hundred fam, students. However, this data was presented from the homeless management information system. So there's that one little breakdown when it comes to government and that requirement of people having to be vulnerable and expose their situation. I will say that there is a valid fear of admitting that you may be experiencing homelessness with youth, with young children, that you could possibly lose custody or at least, I don't want to say possession because they're people, but lose for a period of time, not be able to have those children with you. Secondly, the definition of homelessness has been expanded. And so the definition includes outside unsheltered, in a sheltered, doubled up, and at risk of homelessness. That's the whole spectrum and population that the Bloomington Public Schools are working with. And then on top of that, there are children that have aged out of being in a foster care system that have no supports, that Bloomington Public Schools is also working with. So there is the homeless management information system, HMIS data, but then there's additional data from Minnesota Department of Education that does track this information because of the federal act, known as the McKinney-Vento Act, that is supposed to offer transportation, food, clothing, supports for students and their families, but for students to remain in school to get schooling. But they have to be experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. And under this federal act, you get help with everything but actual homes. So it's a qualifier, but they don't help you with the actual thing. So that's how we have those numbers from Bloomington Public Schools. So it is higher than this data that, of people reporting to Hennepin County. Part of that is, we don't have a shelter here in Bloomington. We don't have the coordinated services here in Bloomington. So we don't have the entities required to submit that information for Bloomington.
Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember DeLisandro raised it earlier in terms of those fourteen thousand in twenty-twenty-one, one-seventy-two. But what, my question would be, certainly there's going to be folks that don't identify, but I'm curious what that number is for Edina and Richfield? If we were to add those numbers together? Because that's typically, from a public health standpoint, the same population, you know, that we work with. So I'd be curious if there's data around that. And then my other question was around, there was a slide that had something to do with disability, and I thought I heard you mention that that was physical, but I was curious if there is mental or other types of disabilities that were included with that, that number as well?
No, mental health issues I do not believe are included in that category.
So how are those accounted for? Are they just a missing, or is that just not a part of the statistical analysis?
Yeah, I would say they're missing in the sense that they are not considered a disability.
Okay. That's very interesting because, you know, especially when you look at populations of veterans and other folks, we do know that that's a driver for those things as well. So I'd be curious about that. And then I saw that there was a population segment that over eighty-eight percent of the Hennepin County folks that kind of fit in this category. And one of the questions I have, and I don't think that you necessarily have an answer for this, but I am just curious about it. I kind of, you know, kind of work my way backwards. You know, how, how did, you know, how did these, this population experience this homelessness? How did they get there? So my question is, you know, are we talking about health-type of things, you know, that drive the eviction? You know, joblessness, you know, lack of salary? You know, certainly I have, you know, you know, folks who I've talked to are, you know, you're talking to them and they're, you know, they're working and they're living in a hotel room and they're working a full shift. So I'm just curious what, what drives that. Is there any empirical data that shows, you know, what are the causes that get you to that, that standpoint? And I got one last, last question.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Lowman. I want to jump back. I will get, look to get the information for Richfield and Edina, but I do want to point out one key factor. They border Minneapolis.
True.
And so it's, it's a little bit easier in terms of transportation in getting to some of the services and resources. Also, in terms of students, they're nowhere near Bloomington Public Schools in terms of the students experiencing homelessness, but I can get those numbers for you. Now, back to your question about what may be driving evictions? All of the above. People are in crisis mode. People have been in crisis mode for generations, if we're being honest. What does crisis mode mean? It means that they may not make enough to make ends meet, that the rising cost, inflation, food, gas, utilities, rent, all makes a factor. They may have a record. Everybody makes mistakes. They may have a mistake in their background. Their credit may not be good enough to secure them what they need. They may have debts. They may have mental health, substance abuse, familial issues.
You asked a question a little differently. I appreciate that analysis, but more so what I'm looking for is, you know, if you were to break down either the eighty-eight percent or just, you know, the total number of folks that aren't seventy-two, you know, X percentage, well, you know, might be driven by health, X percentage by homelessness, you know, criminal record. I'm more, I'm more curious about some of those things because I think as we look to try to, you know, quickly move folks from one, you know, from what they're experiencing in terms of homelessness to, you know, having a home or living in Bloomington permanently, you know, it would be interesting to know what are those things that are, that are causing that? And so, you know, as we look at this as a community opportunity for those folks, I just would like to know, you know, if that data exists, what, what causes that? If that, if that even exists. Because I do think that helps from a, from a public policy standpoint. And I don't need to belabor it now, but I am, I am interested in that. And then my last question here, because I know we've, we're really close on time here and the mayor wants to keep it moving here, is that, you know, and one of the things, you know, we've, we've raised this many a times, I've been on council, and it unfortunately has, has turned to a conversation of, we're just going to work on jobs. And I think part of the fear is, I'll be blatant, I think you've referred to it, Dr. Flowers, with the idea of if you build a center, it's going to attract and bring people here. You know, in addition and above and beyond that. And I appreciate your, your comment as a part of this. And so one of my questions that I have is in terms of the Oasis for Youth. We have, that's been around for a very long period of time. I know it's a different population, but, you know, what have we experienced there from a, from a data perspective in terms of, of, you know, how many, you know, how much did that drive, you know, homelessness in Bloomington? Because I just think that, you know, this is just, folks have a fear. I watched it when folks came in to our hotels. There is this perception of crime, an increase in crime. And I think that we, we have to address that and be able to have conversation about that and acknowledge that. Because I think there is a, there's a prejudice that's there, especially with the demographic of folks that we're talking about here. So I, more of a commentary to that, but I want to, I want to put that out there. I just think that's necessary, that we, we really tackle that and really address that. Because I do think there's a certain amount of people that fear that. And so it makes us believe we can't have productive conversations.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably just me not understanding things, so I'm just going to ask if you can help me. On slide forty-four, it talked about the housing inventory credit and noted that there's eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-three beds. The next slide is the pit count, and it noted in need of two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight on that night that that was many people, how many people were experiencing homelessness. I have to believe that those are not apples-to-apples comparison. So can you help me understand the difference between those?
So the pit count is on one night. And so the available beds are spread out over time. So during the pit count, they're looking for people experiencing homelessness who are in, you know, unsheltered conditions and all around. Whereas the available beds would not be counted if they were in transitional housing, for example. Those are counted as available beds, but they would not necessarily be counted, those people in the pit count.
So the, the eleven thousand five hundred includes other types of housing for people, transitional housing and more supportive, okay. That, that's what I assumed. So the follow-up question to that is, is there a comparison between the available emergency shelter beds in the area somewhat broadly defined versus the need? Just, I mean, one of the recommendations is that we look at emergency shelter in the community and trying to understand what that need actually looks like, what, you know, the number of beds, how big that would be, that type of thing. Is that number available?
One of the challenges to that is that we don't have good data available for the city of Bloomington. So we're kind of jumping back and forth a little bit in a way that I think is probably confusing between the city of, between the county of Minneap, the county of, between Hennepin County and the city of Bloomington. So what we would really need to assess is the number of people who are experiencing homelessness in the city of Bloomington. And as Erica mentioned about the schools, one of the best indicators that we have is the number of students who've been identified as at risk of homelessness, partly because we really don't have access to those numbers for adults.
And, and so the process would be, as I mentioned, aligning with Hennepin County, is really aligning and tapping into Hennepin County and their information, their staff, their resources. I don't have the history in working on homelessness efforts. I work more on built environment housing, affordable housing. Hennepin County are the experts in this, and we're in their county. And so because of that, in order to get those numbers and reach those numbers, we need to talk to them and we need to work with them.
Okay. And I appreciate that. It's just sort of trying to understand where that is, so I appreciate that. I don't mean to take up too much time, Mayor, but why did they cut off the age of twenty-four when they do the pit count? I mean, because to me, there's, there's, that, that's a lot of, you know, difference there. I mean, twenty-four to fifty-five is vastly different than someone seventy-five years old that is experiencing homelessness in my mind. And I think it gets to the question of what's driving homelessness, and it's got to be largely different in those age groups. So any idea why?
I am not sure why they cut off, but I will tell you that they do this count on one of the never fails, in my opinion, the coldest day in January, because of guidance and direction from HUD. And so this is a requirement across the nation, those that have the continuum of care plans, that they do this count on a certain date. And also the guidance, because we mentioned people at risk of homelessness and different things like that, they are not allowed to count people in shelters. They are not allowed to count people in hotels. They are not allowed to count people that are doubled up. They can only count people that are outside, unsheltered. So sleeping in their car or sleeping outside. And I was just like, nobody's doing that on January twenty-sixth, sorry. So that's also something that is skewing the numbers and the count specifically in Minnesota.
Yeah. So I just have one quick follow-up and then one other question. Maybe the city manager can add that to our federal legislative priorities to ask HUD to actually come during that count and do it with people in the county? Because I've been to Washington DC in January, it's, it's not that awful. So my last question is related to the recommendations. And one of the things that sort of caught my eye that was not in there is public health. Considering that we had, you talked about the housing part of it, you talked about the transportation, but you also talked about the services, and we are unique to many communities in that we have a public health department. And are there services that we should be looking at in terms of adding into public health to be able to provide in this area? And so that caught my eye, that it wasn't in there.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie and Councilmember Nelson. Thank you for pointing that out. Public health is in there, as I talk with my colleague, Dr. Nick Kelly, quite often. And also, public health is one, Advisory Board of Health is one of the commissions that makes up the Bloomington Housing Action Team, where this is a specific topic for recommendations for the purpose of making sure we're taking a holistic approach when we are looking at the needs, resources, and services of our community. And so the way to do that is for us to collaborate and work together. That was identified in the HRA assessment as we shifted focus to coordinate and collaborate with public health for services and resources, and we are doing just that. So I may not have called them out, but that was not to leave them out.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and make it quick here. Just, and Councilmember Lowman alluded to this a moment ago. Just for, I guess, trying to figure out where my, my train of thought is to describe this to neighbors and constituents. So I, I know at the food bank I work at for the day job right now, it was record need before the pandemic, and it's catastrophic need now. And all those folks getting our food assistance are one busted tire away from being homeless. So I appreciate the timeliness of this conversation. But I'm wondering, to the recommendation specifically around shelter, it sounds like there's more data to be gathered. But as we're, we spent a lot of time discussing folks experiencing homelessness in Bloomington in need of, say, that emergency shelter. Considering that way, way back, I used to work with Harbor Light Shelter in downtown Minneapolis, and I know a giant push at the time was coordinating systems to be able to direct people to empty beds. Because you'd have lines out the door at one shelter and down the block they are half-empty, but it was the middle of winter and they're not going to walk all the way over there. So there was a big push at the county level to, I can't remember the name of the systems. But long story short, if we put up the shelter here, is it with the goal of reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness that are currently residing in Bloomington or that tend to when they're able to? Or is it because we need one more asset in a network that's coordinated by partners like the county to be able to alleviate the problem overall, which the more we do that, well, lifting tide all boats? Just, what, what's the, the end goal here? Because I'm not sure we could just reserve it for people.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Martin. It's the latter. It is the end goal of eliminate, of alleviating that. And I want to be clear, I was very specific in my words about a congregate living facility. A shelter is a particular model. A shelter is actually a particular model where people come, but they need to leave. So I was very particular in using that language because it needs to be what fits for Bloomington. And we don't know exactly what that is yet. We know it's a built something, but we don't know exactly what that model is. And so it is a congregate living facility that I would be recommending and exploring what that congregate living facility is in partnership with supportive services and our county partners at minimum.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Erica and Dr. Fowler, for doing the presentation. It would have made a lot more sense once you guys were up here to me. And mine is more of a comment. I think this, along with some of the other presentations tonight, really highlights our need. We are, as we said earlier, the biggest small town in Minnesota. And growing up in a small town, I know we take care of our own. And so this presentation, to me, highlights that we need highlights that we need to take care of our own. We're not doing what we need to do for the people who live here. And so I, I'm excited to see what we're going to be able to do. And taking this as a call to action so that we can take care of our own people.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So similar sentiments. Thank you so much for your work on this. One of the comments I just want, I'm going to keep it very brief because I know we're, it's getting late. But huh? Oh. One of the things that was discussed in the report was the schools partnership and the, I wrote it down probably some, some notes somewhere. But it's an actual program with the schools. And so I'm kind of, I'm curious, is that something that you're going to look into and start working with the school district on? I mean, for me, when I see one in three kids in Bloomington are experiencing homelessness and that it's, I think 25% of the population, I can't remember if it was in Bloomington or Hennepin County. But I mean, I feel like that is a, a partnership and a program that could be pursued to get quick results. Or not quick results, but to, I mean, it's like a very clear starting point where we have a defined need. And I also appreciated that you put information in there about veterans and, and that they actually have probably one of the kind of the best support systems for veterans experiencing homelessness. So what can we learn from what they're doing kind of right in that space? Maybe they have more resources. I don't know. But are there things that we could be replicating in other kind of age groups or populations, seeing how well things are working kind of more for the veteran homeless, veterans experiencing homelessness? I appreciate having the correct language. So.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Carter. Yes. Stable Homes, Stable Schools is a program in the city of Minneapolis that is a partnership between Hennepin County, Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, City of Minneapolis, YMCA, and landlords. And so there is an opportunity through that program that one, households, students are identified from particular schools that have a higher number of highly mobile and/or homeless students that they may receive a voucher if MPHA had the funding to secure voucher. And/or there are landlords that are willing to rent to those households and there is, there is rent subsidy. It took a lot to get that program up and going. It has been successful. What I will say is here in Bloomington, we are already in discussion and talks about different things since this session closed, about opportunities through Hennepin County with Bloomington Public Schools. And so we will already be moving forward to look at different opportunities where we can see what will work and be a right size fit for Bloomington's needs.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not looking for a response now, but I'm, you know, maybe looking for later on. But you know, if you look at, and not rightly or wrongly, I know I went to a convention and they tell you to be careful about comparing other cities. But if you look at communities of our size, I'm interested to know how many others have a building, whatever that may be, that services, you know, the, this, these populations and what can be learned by, you know, what they do, you know, how are they successful? What are some of the challenges that they face? So those are some of the questions I have if we were to kind of go down this pathway in terms of, you know, what we would build, what we'd be. So kind of not a question for now, but for later on.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Lohman. I will just add that when we look at communities of our size, we will be looking outside the state.
Thank you. Thanks for the questions, Council. I think good discussion. Just one follow up question on Councilmember Carter's point that she started to make, I think we're headed down the same path here. On, on strategy three here, you talk about, or it talks about aligning efforts across organizations in the community. And I, I see the, the other language to align specifically with Hennepin County Office of Housing Stability. And I get at the billion dollars or whatever is coming from the state is going specifically through, I'm assuming the county in the county. No, not.
Minnesota Housing.
Minnesota Housing. Okay. But I just want to make sure that as we, we focus in one area, we don't forget about aligning efforts across our community because we have faith organizations, we have veterans organizations, we've got our friends at Cornerstone and friends at Oasis and so on. So I want to make sure that we, we use all of the resources at our disposal to attack this problem because it's something that is going to take a community wide effort and not specifically just alignment of one organization.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey. We are on the same page.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you much for the presentation this evening. Thank you, Dr. Flowers, for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. Council, we will move on to item three in our agenda. Our consent business. Councilmember Martin has the consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Martin.
First off, I have a long series of questions about the consent agenda tonight. I just want to really get into it. So far I have one hold from Councilmember Lohman that I'll touch on in a minute here on 3.7. I have not heard of any other holds unless anybody has something last minute. Okay. I will motion approval of items 3.1 to 3.6 and 3.8 through 3.19.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 3.7, Councilmember Lohman.
And Councilmember Lohman just had just asked me to hold this. He had wanted to vote no on it without having to vote no on the full slate of consent items.
Understood. All right.
So I am happy, Mayor, to move item 3.7. I will move that we adopt a resolution denying the proposed city code text amendment to allow K-12 schools as a conditional use in the I-2 limited industry zoning district.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to accept item 3.7 on tonight's consent business. No further questions on this from the council? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion, motion carries five two with Muah and Lohman voting no. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Moving on to item four on our agenda. These are our hearings, resolutions and ordinances. We have two of them this evening. Item 4.1 is a public hearing on an ordinance modifying the partial vacation of Lindell Lane. Mr. Keel, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is an item that is associated with the development proposal by the Mall of America Holding Companies for the Water Park of America. There's a series of vacations needed to accommodate that development, quite complicated frankly, having to do with the development across Lindell Lane and the location of both public and private utilities. And so it's quite an extensive and complicated vacation process. That original ordinance was set to expire tomorrow. And the Mall of America Companies has asked that we extend that till the end of 2024 to allow them to continue to search to finalize the financing for that development and for to pursue or to, to complete. So we are recommending approval of this.
So what you're recommending is an extension of what's currently in place?
Yes.
No modifications, no additional issues at all, but just extending what is currently in place?
That is correct.
Very good. Council questions on this? Councilmember Dalisandro.
Very quick question for you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Carl. Nice to see you. Is that, have we done this before? Generally speaking, it's a fairly common practice, I assume. And if so, is it normal that it's for this long? I'm just kind of curious if we're making a major exception.
I would say that it is not a common practice. We don't have many developments like that one, first off, that are as complicated as this one, but also that takes so long to kind of finalize whether they're moving forward or not. So I would say it's not a common practice. We don't have a typical application process to cover this kind of thing. So it is just a modification to the originally approved ordinance. I'm not aware of a similar one.
Okay. So maybe a follow up question then. You're recommending approval of it and it made, I guess I maybe probably inferred that the, the reason that you were recommending approval was because it was fairly routine in its request. And maybe I'm miss, misunderstanding that, but it.
I would say that it's not routine, routine request, but we are recommending approval because the situation hasn't changed at all from the original approval. So all the nuances and the needed vacations are the same. And that it is the applicant's expectation that they will eventually complete the financing of this deal and it will move forward. And so we're good with that. And that's why we're recommending approval.
Okay. And, and I noticed that you mentioned that there's, if it were to, if they needed to extend it again, they would have to start the process over. Is there a reason for that particular deadline? Is that in statute or is that like, because if it's not that routine, I'm just wondering if, like, would they be able to come back and ask for it again? And would we consider it?
I think the answer is yes, we would consider it if they were to ask again.
Okay.
And we again, would have to have some optimism that the project was proceeding still and that the situation was the same.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Madasheim?
He remembers. If you look at section five on page 195 of your agenda on the PDF, it talks about the conditions in order for the vacation to become effective. When we previously had this before the body, we, we don't want to vacate this right away until certain other things come into play. So this is extending the time horizon for, for that to happen. As Mr. Keel indicated, this was a request from the original applicant and the representative, and the representative for that applicant is on the line if we have any other questions.
Council, additional questions of Mr. Keel? All right. Hearing none. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing now on item 4.1, public hearing on an ordinance modifying the partial vacation of Lindell Lane. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 this evening? No one coming forward. Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 4.1 tonight?
Mr. Mayor, there is no one on the line, but I do have William Griffith available. So I will unmute him and see if he is interested in speaking. And he's now available.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm just here to answer any questions. I would simply state that last December, you extended the development approvals, planned development approvals for this project. When this ordinance was about to expire, we made a similar request. So all those approvals would be in alignment and the quest for financing continues.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you.
Last call here in the chambers. Anyone speaking to item 4.1 this evening? Council, no one in the chambers coming forward? No one on the line wishing to speak specifically to this other than Mr. Griffith? Look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing. Council, any additional questions or comments on this? If not, I would look for action on item 4.1.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Lohman.
I would adopt an ordinance modifying the partial vacation of Lindell Lane, FKA East 81st Street as dedicated in the plat of Airport South Edition, Mall of America, Mall of America Fifth Edition and Mall of America Eighth Edition, according to the recorded plat thereof, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the ordinance modifying the partial vacation of Lindell Lane as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 4.2 on our agenda is our second and final public hearing of the evening. This is an ordinance to convey by quitclaim deed real property located in the city of Bloomington. Our HRA director, Eric Coleman, is back for this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do have a brief presentation because it's just easier to digest the information. So we are talking about the Ralph lots, the right of way acquisition loan lots at 82nd and Humboldt. And I learned from my colleague in special projects and initiatives to give you the information, the bottom line up front. So what is the bottom line? That staff is recommending, we did so at the HRA board on June 13th, and we are now here at the city council on June 26th, an approval of funds and process to achieve city goals of redeveloping the five right of way acquisition loan fund, Ralph, lots at 82nd and Humboldt Avenue with a minimum of five affordable units, which can be ownership and/or rental, and affordable is at 80% AMI or below. So what are these lots? We are speaking about the five lots that are identified in the green on this map, 8440, 8422, 8446 and 8452 Humboldt. And then off to its lonesome, 1210 82nd Street. These lots came before you previously because this is what the Met Council, Minnesota Department of Transportation has decided they do not need for any future highway expansion or improvement projects. The lots that are identified in blue, they still need. And the lots that are identified in yellow will be held for water resources hope. So what is the timeline? Cause I like to give you a timeline of what has happened. Well, in 2003, the city council authorized the Met Council funding application to purchase 28 parcels. You did so through resolution 2003 25 granting that approval. Between 2004 and 2005, the city executed loan documents, purchase agreements with voluntary owners and took title of the land that the owners decided to sell. During that time as well, the structures were removed from the properties. And so between 2008 and 2022, we were quiet. Then in 2022, five lots were released. Minnesota Department of Transportation notified the city that they would be releasing five lots, but that due to the funding that was received from the Met Council, there was a need to pay that back. So in talking with Met Council, appraisals were completed because that total funding was about $1.6 million for five lots. There were no structures on them. And appraisals were completed to show the actual market cost of the vacant land today. The HRA at the same time, towards the tail end, did submit an application for the Met Council Affordable Home Ownership Pilot Funding, that if we release these, got these lots released and free of encumbrances, how could we build affordable homeownership on these lots with Hap Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity Partner? Resolution 2022 153 was passed by this body. And what that resolution was, was when this body did identify that the HRA would act as agent for the marketing and sell the properties to manage the process and to work with a affordable homeownership mission based organization, whether that was rental or affordable homeownership. So now in 2023, the Met Council awarded the HRA funding of $300,000 to build a minimum of four units. That is with the HRA providing a match of $300,000. So this is $600,000 to get a minimum of four units affordable at 80% AMI or below with a focus on 50% AMI. The Met Council did approve acceptance of the appraised value for the five lots in April of 2023. And so I remember I said that the total loans that were taken out were 1.6 million. The appraised values came back at $549,000 for all five lots. Met Council went through their policymaking and approval process and said, we can accept $549,000. Please remit payment. Well, I went to the HRA board and said, well, this is in line with what we have talked about through the HRA assessment and the role of the HRA and working with the city council. Can we use $549,000 from our development fund? That's the whole purpose of it, to remit the payment to free these lots up. HRA board on June 13th did approve that. And so now I'm here today to the city council to request that you convey the land to the HRA for the $549,000 payment. And that is the focus of where we are today so that we can have control to move forward with aligning with our goals for that property, which is developing affordable homeownership and/or rental properties. So this does align with the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan, specifically section three, housing element, where we would be increasing the supply and, and access to affordable housing of new units. We will be helping to foster housing stability and just increase in the supply overall. It aligns with Bloomington Tomorrow Together. How convenient that it aligns with the same strategies as homelessness. Well, it aligns by strategic objective number two, because we will achieve significant improvement in the indices measuring the community's environmental and individual health. And we will identify and align efforts across organizations in the community to leverage, develop and maximize assets to achieve mutually beneficial outcomes. I have mentioned Met Council, I have mentioned. I have mentioned Met Council, I have mentioned Habitat for Humanity. I mean, I think we're trying to do that here, right? And so, with that, what is the process? On June 13th, the HRA Board approved a budget adjustment, and tonight I'm asking you to hold a public hearing for the consideration to convey the property through a quitclaim deed to the HRA, as well as receive funds from the HRA in the amount of $549,000 for the purpose of remitting payment to the Met Council to free the encumbrances on these properties. Next steps will be working with Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity to develop a minimum of four long-term affordable ownership properties. I've already had conversations with them. They do know our focus is to maximize density where we can, especially with our single-family and two-family zoning standards being amended. They are on board. We just need to get the plans and the numbers. And then HRA will also seek additional affordable housing mission-based developer for additional lot or lots. Reason that it's phrased that way, there are three lots that are contiguous. If those three lots can do at least four units, then we still have two lots to work with that are not contiguous to each other. And so that's why it's phrased that way. And with that, I have a suggested motion, but it is first a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Do you work on any simple projects, or do they all, do they all track over 20 years and involve all these different groups and numbers and so on?
They seem to all have tracked over about 20 years.
Twenty years, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. Counsel, any questions of Ms. Coleman on this one? Councilmember Lohman.
Just a quick one. And I think you answered this already when I asked the questions earlier today of the city manager. Just so I'm clear in my mind, basically the limit on this for the deed is 30 years, right?
So, thank you, Councilmember Lohman. Let me clarify that question for those listening. The question was about long-term affordability, and how would we ensure that? So, long-term affordability is defined by affordable at 15 years. However, through law at the state, we cannot go beyond 30 years in a deed restriction for affordability. And so the maximum affordability is 30. We will be looking at a minimum of 15, but we can explore what that would look like for a deed restriction. So, minimum 15, maximum 30.
Additional questions, counsel? If not, I will open the public hearing now on item 4.2. This is a public hearing, an ordinance to convey by quitclaim deed real property located in the city of Bloomington, as outlined in the presentation. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Mr. Sable, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I have a caller with 952-693. I'm going to unmute you, 952-693.
Good evening, counsel, and city manager, and mayor. This is Commissioner fraud Wooten, HRA Board Member. I'm actually calling tonight as a resident of Bloomington to just explain that this is the reason why I was excited about becoming a HRA Board Commissioner. This is the kind of work that truly makes the community very inviting, and it's the reason I moved to Bloomington six years ago.
Thank you so very much for your input. Anyone else on the phone? Mr. Sable?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one else.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? No one coming forward. Counsel, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Counsel, any further discussion on this? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just one quick thing, one I'm very excited about this opportunity, and appreciate Erica reaching out and talking to me prior to the meeting. And what I'm really excited about is what we did with our recent changes to billing standards and things like that. And I would love to just, as this moves along, keep hearing more about how that's impacting it, how it's reducing the cost, how it's getting towards what we're looking at to reduce the amount of subsidy it takes to get someone into a homeownership opportunity. Because I think, as we all recall, I mean, looking at $200,000 to $250,000 to subsidize, you know, one house for some people is a significant amount of money. And, you know, everything we can do to make that subsidy go further, I think is just great. So to see this come together with the work of the council, it's just a great opportunity, and so, thank you for your hard work.
Well-stated, councilmember, thank you. Counsel, anything else? If not, counsel, I would look for action, and I would point out that we have two motions to consider this evening on item 4.2.
Happy to make those.
Councilmember Dalisandro.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-something, an ordinance to convey by quitclaim deed real property located in the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Nelson, to adopt an ordinance to convey by quitclaim deed real property located in the city of Bloomington. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Dalisandro.
I move to accept the funds from the HRA in the amount of $549,000 to remit payment to the Met Council in the same amount for the Ralph properties.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Nelson, to accept the funds from the HRA in the amount of $549,000 to repayment to the Met Council in the same amount for the Ralph properties. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Well done, congratulations. Thank you so much for this. We will move on to item 5, our organizational business, and item 5.1 on our agenda, recommendations for our 2023 Cultural Arts Support Grant Funding. We got Ian Recky here from our manager of Bloomington Center for the Arts. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening to Mr. Mayor and our councilmembers. I'm here to present the 2023 Cultural Arts Support Grant Funding Recommendations for the city of Bloomington. So for those watching or listening that are not familiar with the city's grant process, the purpose of this program is to provide cultural arts opportunities for Bloomington residents, bring arts activities to people who may not otherwise have access, make Bloomington a more desirable place to live and work, use city funding to leverage additional support funds, facilitate high-quality, cost-effective community arts programming, encourage development and expansion of the arts in the community, promote arts activities throughout Bloomington facilities and parks, and to promote collaboration among the various arts groups. A very brief history of the CAS program. The city has allocated arts program support funds since the 1960s and 70s. Prior to 2010, Bloomington Fine Arts Council distributed CAS funds to member organizations. In 2011, there was a CAS application process that was implemented, and since that time, a little over $1.5 million has been distributed through this program, impacting over 630,000 people in the community. When this is broadcast and marketed, and we send this out in many different ways, this goes through the city's website and the Arts Center webpage. My clicker will work here. The Parks and Recreation email digest called "The Program" sends this out in their subscriber weekly. Our Coed Division contacts share this with the Weekly Friday E-News Network. There we go. Creative Placemaking Network sends this out in their E-News Blasts. The City Department's social media platforms share this, and this is also shared in direct email announcements to specific arts networks in the area. I don't know where I'm supposed to aim it. Oh, going back? There we go. Okay. And... There we go. Our 2023 review panelists are very similar to previous years in that it is a mixture of city staff that have arts background of some sort, community arts members, and then we also have a representative each year from the Park Commission, and then I, serving as Center for the Arts Manager, and the non-voting moderator of said panel. So this is reflective of previous years in the makeup of this panel. This is an all-volunteer panel each year. Anybody that is asked and accepts can fulfill this role, and their process takes about three to four weeks to complete. There we go. Thank you. So, after completing their process, the review panel has recommended the following amounts. These are listed in alphabetical order on your screen here. These were also the amounts approved by the Park Commission for your review today. City staff is requesting that the City Council approve the 2023 Cultural Arts Support Program Recommendation for Funding as listed on your screen. Thank you so much for your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Recky. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Recky on this? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So just one question. One of the recommendations that came for this is to give nearly one-third of the dollars to the city. And I want to know the history of the 60 years that we've done that. Has that been something that the city has done in the past?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Lohman. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, to my understanding, no, that has not happened before. The Park Commission did, excuse me, review panelists and then Park Commission did generate some ideas for how that funding may be used. I did actually add one additional slide just for that, as they did list potential uses for the remaining funds. There is no official plan on how to use this. There is not anything put into place right now. CAS review panel suggestions, however, were scholarship dollars for education programs if they're restarted, funding free community arts events in BCA or out in the community, funding guest artist performances at low or no-ticket cost to the community. And as I said, Park approved these recommendations for your review today.
Let me ask it in a different way. In years past, when there's been an excess amount of money, what has the city done? Has that, you know, simply gone back into the general fund? Has that, just help me understand what we've done. I just can't remember what we've done in the past where we've had excess, or have we always just redistributed all that money?
Councilmember Lohman, thank you for the question. I'm going to step up and answer the question, because Ian's only been here since mid-February, so he doesn't have a past history, so that's why I'm supporting him from the wings here. This is only the second year where there have been funds remaining. Last year, I believe there were some funds remaining, because that had predominantly been due to COVID impacts. And so, as a rule, applicants can only apply for up to 30% of their annual operating budget. So because of COVID impacts lowering operating budgets across the board, the remaining funds last year just weren't spent on anything. I think there was around $10,000 last year that were left over, and the money just didn't go anywhere. This year, that amount is more considerable for varying reasons. And so there is no set plan for these dollars. That's part of the conversation. I believe that may or may not happen tonight. The recommendations that Ian shared with you are just some of the thoughts that, ways that the community could benefit through these dollars, because that's what they're truly meant for. But if there is no decision on what these dollars could be used for towards the community benefit, then they can just not be used as well.
Yeah, thanks for that historical background. And then just a couple other questions. There was a little bit in the, within the document, talking about some email communications, Nafu. And what I'm just trying to be sure that I'm clearly understanding it, was it on the part of the email coming from the provider, coming to the city? And the city lost the email? Or was it something where the person who made the, or the organization that made the request lost the email? I just, I couldn't quite make it make sense in my mind, even though you wrote it a couple different ways.
Yep.
I'm just trying to get it straight in my head, so I completely understand. And I think they got $7,000, something like that. Just wanted to be sure I'm clear.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, so there was a late submission that was considered for this, for Bloomington Corral. We did verify with IT that our city servers blocked that email, and I was able to verify that it was sent in on time through a couple different outlets, checking directly with Bloomington Corral. So it was a city server issue that caused the delay in that, which is why that application was considered late in the process.
And if you don't mind adding on to that, what happened is, according to IT, for whatever reason, Gmail accounts over the span of a number of days were being blocked. The IT contacted individuals, remedied the problem, but it was not discovered until later that this particular email had not made it through to its destination. So IT was able to look back, see what emails were blocked, and found the date and time it was submitted.
And I'm just going to make an assumption that we're confident that we have all the other applications that were out there. I'm assuming that that's the case, that there aren't any other applications blocked by the server that we haven't gotten yet. I would assume somebody would have called or said something by now, but I'm just making that assumption.
Councilmember Lohman, we actually made that same assumption, because we would have hopefully heard by now if an applicant did not receive any word on their application that was submitted.
Thanks, Mayor. Those are my initial questions. I'll have some later.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just following up on the Bloomington Corral. I saw something that there were some changes to the program, that it would be the responsibility of the applicant to follow back up, to make sure it was received. And so let me just ask a couple questions before I get to my point on that. Bloomington Corral had received funding in the past. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Approximately how many years?
Many. I'm not, I have to look back, but they are a group that have been around for decades.
So, was there any reason for staff or the review committee to believe that they wouldn't submit this year, that they just had all this money, that they didn't need money from us this year, after having asked for it for many years?
One of the reasons why, Councilmember Eric Nelson, thank you for the question. One of the reasons why we didn't reach that specific group is because then we would have to reach out to all groups that we sent out the application process to the network. So, even though they had applied for in the past, the assumption, as far as staff was concerned, it would be unfair for us to contact them and not contact any of the other arts groups that were made aware of this opportunity. So, that was the decision that was made.
Let me ask this. Had any other group that had been receiving funding for multiple years in the past not applied again?
I've been here three years. I have not seen it. Councilmember Nelson.
Okay. So I guess my point would be that, you know, I think you could eliminate it to the one, following up the one that had a lengthy history of applying for this, and just say, "Hey, just want to make sure," you know, that you intentionally didn't apply, given that history. And I wouldn't see the need to reach out to everyone that it had been sent to if they've never applied in the past. Just my take on that. In the past, do we know how much they received?
We can get that information for you. We have a history where we've kept track of amounts allocated year by year. So we can certainly get that for you, Councilmember Nelson.
Okay. That would be helpful, because I know their amount was reduced. I know there were reasons, both based on the organization and based on the lateness of the application and things like that. And I just want to see, you know, the organization doesn't seem to have changed that much. So I want to see if it's consistent with what they've received in the past.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question related to the questions that are asked in the application. So do you have kind of, do you have a corresponding document that lists criteria? So, when we, of course, I've been scrolling through here, but, okay, so when we talk about administration, fiscal stability, is there like, is there criteria associated with that? So that when reviewers are reviewing the applications, they have some kind of objective pieces to go by? Like, for me, like, I might think fiscal stability means one thing, and another reviewer might mean something else, right? And so, given that we have had some arts organizations experience some pretty significant financial issues over the last year, I guess I'm just curious. Yeah, for me, it would be helpful to know if there were some, there was criteria associated with these things, because, because of everything that's been happening, especially.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there are pretty extensive criteria, actually. So there are, is it five or six scoring categories? I'm trying to remember specifically, but there are five or six scoring categories. And then within that, there are criteria listed in a breakdown of that. So, we do have the full application process to share and available to read through for anybody that's interested.
Okay. I did request the application, but I didn't see the scoring criteria. So I would be interested in that.
So we can certainly send that to you, Councilmember Carter. That's also posted and shared with the application RFP, so people can see not only the RFP application questions, but they can also see the criteria for which they're being reviewed.
Awesome. I will say that, just kind of more high-level comment, not necessarily related to the specific funding requests. For such a small amount of money, these are, it's a lot of questions. I mean, I kind of feel like we really put these organizations through the wringer in terms of, like, for, you know, what ends up being $5,000 or $7,000. I mean, I used to work in I mean, I used to work in the grant, like the community grant making space and we had similar amount of questions probably, but they were like 100,000 plus grants, right? So I don't know. I kind of feel like I don't know whose decision that is to, to look at this, but it just seems like, um, it seems like a very extensive and strenuous process for a very small amount of dollars. And then I guess my other comment would be that, you know, I really would like to see all of the dollars go to the arts organizations. And I do have some concerns that Artistry's was, uh, reduced so significantly, um, especially just given the conversations that we had as a council when we agreed to the funding, um, kind of the more emergency funding in the fall. You know, I, I saw the comments related to public benefit and, you know, that they're not doing classes anymore, and that is true. But I also, I mean, they're doing summer camp programs and they're still doing theater and they're, you know, they're still providing a public benefit. And so, um, I guess that's my kind of one, uh, that's kind of my very specific concern. I'm very comfortable with the funding for the other organizations, but I do, I would like to see us just decide to have all of the resources go to the arts organizations. And I would like a reconsideration of Artistry personally.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with, uh, Councilmember Carter with regards to Artistry. However, um, I also still think it would be important for us to get some more information from Artistry. We obviously provided a significant amount of money to them in the past, and I would still like to have a little bit more transparency on where those funds went and things like that before approving that. But I, so I'm, I'm kind of of two minds. Like I want to know what happened to the last money before I give you more money, but I think they're probably eligible for additional money. But the question I have related to that is, part of it is the programming that they're providing, but part of it is also the box office. And so I guess maybe for the city manager talking about sort of that change, that transition, what costs we're going to see there going forward? Are we going to see any of those in this year? Or how that's going to impact the budget? Maybe it impacts future years, those types of things. I'm just, that box office was a part that they provided in the past and, um, and were, to my understanding, doing that now.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I'm actually going to ask Leah Hughes to answer that question because Leah was involved in the process to transition into the box office and did the analysis on the, on the costs related to it.
So Councilmember Nelson, um, it came down to a number of factors. So for a time, their Artistry was unable to offer a box office and was closed. So the result of that, because Bloomington Center for Arts did not hold their own box office and manage it, they had to find other outside means to do that. And they all picked different ones. And so as you can imagine, when it comes to patrons who are used to going to one place, um, now there are two different places. It became really confusing and really difficult for ticket buyers to in fact buy tickets, know where to buy tickets. And then there were some issues with some of the, the ticket vendors repaying the ticket fees that some of the, um, arts organizations were owed. And so in conversations with some of the arts organizations whose box offices used to be provided by Artistry, who no longer had the capacity to do that, um, and just for ease and customer service, we need to figure out how to find a centralized box office once again. Simultaneously, Bloomington Ice Garden happened to be looking at a ticketing system for their own reasons. And so I was able to sit in on some of the demonstrations through the vendor who's providing ticketing through Bloomington Ice Garden, which is very similar to the way Artistry was offering box office for similar fees. And so it was decided at the time, because we needed a centralized box office, they could no longer, no longer provide it. And we have a number of artists, guest artists and resident groups who needed box office services that we attached the art center onto the contract. The Ice Garden was already signing and we've been moving forward with that since, just to make sure that we had that service and it was consistent for not only the patrons, but for the resident arts groups and guest artists that were performing in the center as well.
Okay. I appreciate that information. And like I said, I think Artistry maybe deserves a little bit fuller conversation about how much we fund them. The other one that I wanted to raise is the Concerto Dance. And not that I think it's, um, a bad organization or anything like that. It sounds very innovative and actually pretty cool. My concern is the $7,000 when, to my knowledge, they've done one event in Bloomington this year. They've done one last year. They did one before. And, you know, I look at, you know, I just pulled up notable singers and they have one at the Schneider Theater, the Band Shell, um, the Lions, uh, Summer House, Redemption Lutheran Church, you know, they have, you know, six things listed that they're doing and they, they get $5,000. You know, in terms of impact, um, you know, I think notable singers, to my knowledge, is mostly Bloomington-based. The other organization is out of, um, Inver Grove. And I'm assuming that most of their people that participated in it are from Inver Grove, not from Bloomington. And so that, that one is of concern to me as well, just not being a Bloomington-based, not being a, uh, Bloomington-focused. You know, I appreciate that they want to grow that and I think that would be great. And at that time, it may make sense to increase the funding to them. But just relative to what they're doing in our community to some, I mean, even just Artistry, you know, comparing 7,000 to 30,000, given, you know, two major productions that Artistry will produce, the summer classes, they did do some classes. I know they got rid of a lot of the education that had been done upstairs, but their theater education has still somewhat continued on that. So I mean, I just look at that, what the community is receiving for these dollars, that one isn't making a lot of sense in my mind.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Apologies. I, I know we were thinking about, I thought we were still in question mode for them as opposed to discussion mode amongst us. So I, I want to just double check if we're, are we now talking amongst ourselves about what our decisions are or, because I don't have any questions, but I did want to make comments and I just want to be sure they can have a seat or whatever, as opposed to waiting for me to make a question I'm not going to ask.
I believe we have moved into the discussion phase and I, and I think, yes, you probably could have a seat unless you want to stand there.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have just a couple more questions.
Oh, we do.
Sorry.
We do have just a couple more questions.
I'll hold my comments till.
Very good.
I will, I'll apologize. Uh, you know, obviously the, uh, the, the staff and the, the committee had made a recommendation. One question I had about is, is Artistry in terms of, from a historical perspective, what they have gotten, uh, in the past and what services they provide? I'm not looking for an answer now because I think that's, that's a very complicated question, so I'm not looking for the answer. But there seemed to be, uh, some dissatisfaction with respect, uh, you know, to, uh, the administration piece of it. And I just had a, a question about in terms of, in the application, so that groups and organizational budgets should be, um, uh, should be attached, uh, to, to the document. And my understanding is that was not attached to the document? Is that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, it was attached and, uh, filled out as, as requested through the RFP. The additional financial documents that were provided were from 2020, 2021.
But this, the, the organizational budget was current with, with, with respect to the monies that were going to be spent going forward?
Correct. Yes, it was provided as such.
And then the list of additional funding sources, was that information, Jermaine and, and all there?
Yes.
Good. And then the fiscal year financial statements, uh, a copy of the organization's, uh, must, most recent financial year statements, those, those were not there, right? With income in the expenses?
Correct.
Okay, so those are missing. The other organizations that were there, was that information provided, uh, by all those other organizations?
Those other organizations provided for the most recent fiscal year, which for them, a, almost all of these operate from July to June fiscal years, so 2021 to 2022.
Okay, so what you're indicating is that Artistry may have a different fiscal year.
They have the same fiscal year, they just didn't provide the information.
They shouldn't provide, they didn't provide the information. So that information wasn't there and that was the, the part of the basis for, for the recommendation of the $30,000. And then there's also administration, uh, issues as well in terms of what you, what you got, right? Is, have I, have I, am I understanding it correctly? I mean, in terms of the characterization of, of why Artistry came in at a lower.
And Mr. Verbrugge, do you have any insight on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Lohman, the, the recommendation on the $30,000 wasn't exclusively related to the financials. It was an assessment of the services that they were providing, uh, in the context of the funds that were being requested. I think as, uh, Mr. Brecky and Ms. Hughes have referenced in the memo and the information provided council and discussion today, a lot of the, uh, activity of Artistry that has historically been funded utilizing the cultural arts support grants has gone towards arts education and the, the education activity that occurs in the classrooms here in the Center for the Arts. Nowhere in the proposal or, or I think there's very little reference to continuing to do that arts education. They are providing summer camps. But in terms of one of the, uh, major, uh, services that they provided for the community was the arts education, uh, work that was done previously. And they have not indicated that, um, any of the funds that will be provided will go to that. They are, um, they're focused on theater and, and the galleries, which are important. But the arts education piece is absent from the services that they're offering near as we can tell.
And so, uh, and so the recommendation, just so I'm, I'm very clear and I'll, I'll be done here, Mayor, um, yeah, the, the committee felt that those, um, activities would not necessitate a, a, you know, a larger number, that, 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 that number should be done at the 30,000. I'm just trying to understand, um, in terms of the, the recommendation, how that basis got there, or was there not enough information to, to sufficiently be able to make the, uh, understanding that this is why you would need above and beyond the 30,000?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, I think that's a better question for Mr. Brecky since he worked directly with the review committee.
Mr. Brecky?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, the, the review committee discussed this quite extensively, actually. And, uh, we, I did attempt to provide as best of a summary as I could in the written memo, uh, which, which is accessible, of course. But the, the main points that were discussed were the reduction of public benefit in the arts education program that had always been provided and is actually written into the lease agreement of Artistry. Uh, so that was, that was a major piece that came through that. The application focused very much on theater and the BCA stage, which the committee, uh, the panel felt was very valued and that they wanted to provide funding, uh, of some sort that, that continued that process. They also listed the other values that they found in Artistry. The, the community benefit piece was important. They just, they did discuss community engagement overall and that the application lacked specific details as to how that was going to happen. And that it was, it was very much in the, these are our hopes and dreams and this is what we intend, but we didn't see any action items within that. Uh, and then the administrative piece, I think, has, has been discussed already in detail. But those were the three points that the, uh, the panel discussed.
Thanks for that clarification because what in my mind, I just want to be sure that I understand that the, the recommendations coming out is not based on the idea that, 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 that it's not the programming that they're providing, that, you know, an organization can't change their programming and say, hey, no, we want to do this now and we're locking into what you had to do in the past. Because that's, that's the way I read it. And, and that's not what you're saying. So, thank you.
Counsel, are there any additional questions or can we get into discussion mode here? If there's no additional questions, I, I want to remind counsel, I mean, we, we have the discretion to, to do what we want with this. I mean, so, I, I, and I would, I would recommend that if, um, if we have different ideas or different suggestions, somebody bring forward a proposal and we can move forward with it or we, or not, and eventually get to where we, we need to be with this. So.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Like I said, I thought we were in question time and not in comment time. So, um, yes, I do have a proposal, in fact. I'm with Councilmember Carter. I think, uh, art, cultural arts grants should go to cultural arts organizations. I'd like to see us spend all of this money with our friends in cultural arts. I'm also probably a little bit more lenient than Councilmember Nelson in the sense that I love the idea that we have a new, uh, cultural arts organization coming forward saying, hey, please help me get on my feet and get out, uh, in front of Bloomington audiences. Um, I, I respect the, the comparison, um, but I, I'm all for more, more arts is better. And I'm always going to land, land on that side, especially if the, we're not being asked for any additional funding sources. I also, I also, I'm not 100% sure I agree with the sentiment that I heard from Councilmember, that the, the way that Councilmember Lohman took the same conversation. If, if Artistry had come to us today and had never offered education to us and said, I need $80,000 to do these things, would we have given them the $80,000? Because I think that that's what they're allowed to do, is to say like, no, we don't provide that service. Now, the lease agreement for the, for the, eh, the location is a whole other conversation. That's not what this grant is about. And I think that we could talk about that separately if we want to bring the grant, the lease up again. I'd hope we don't do that. I just, I, I don't want to keep sticking it in the eye of Artistry because they don't have their act together yet when they provide such valuable services to us. This place would be empty if we didn't have them right now for, for a lot of the season. And I want them to get back on their feet and I want to support them. So here's my proposal. I actually think we should just give all of the money that was asked for, for everybody. I know we don't have enough to support Artistry completely, but, um, if we gave the $7,900 that Bloomington Corral asked, the $5,498 that the notable singers asked, and additional $20,000 to Artistry to make it a $50,000 grant, we'd still have $30,000 left over in that fund. And so that would be the proposal that I would offer as a way of compromise to getting us to a place of voting on something.
Can you repeat that again?
I'd be happy to.
So we can.
So the full grant to, um, Bloomington Corral, I think that we awarded them $5,000, but we, they've asked for 7,900. Maybe it's 78 something, something because I know that 30,000, like that 30% number, right? It's like 78 something, something. Then the $5,000 award to notable singers, um, they asked for 5,498. Seems like we could probably, is that doable in, is that, that doesn't take them over their 30% number, right?
My understanding is 5, 4, 9, 8, I believe you said, is exactly 30%.
Okay, great. That, that, that sounds great. And then I would like to consider an additional $20,000 of this to Artistry. I mean, we could go up to 80 and it would still leave him $602 to go do something with, but I, I'm, I'm, I understand the, I understand the issue. So what I'm recommending is an additional $20,000 awarded to Artistry, so make that grant a $50,000 grant. And so we can talk about that, but that would be my proposal.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I could support, uh, you know, the 80,000 to Artistry, um, but I'd like to see, um.
No, I, I believe she said 50,000.
She said 50, sorry. I would support up to 80,000, uh, going to Artistry. However, um, I wouldn't want to see anything more than 30,000, uh, tonight until we, uh, saw more financials, um, because I think the committee has raised, um, some very good points. And I'd like to get that information, uh, prior to, uh, prior to giving them additional money.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Lohman in terms of the financials. And I had been under the assumption that we were going to get some audited financials after we had made the last investment. There was a conversation that they were going to have an audit done. And so I'm a little disappointed that we don't have that and that they didn't provide it with that. I do totally recognize that they, you know, the work that they're doing and continue to do and, but, you know, they obviously went through, um, significant challenges and we made significant investment. And, you know, I'm just not comfortable putting more money into it, not knowing where they're actually at now. I mean.
Well, if I may, Mr. Councilmember Nelson, I believe, could, and maybe Ms. Manderscheid needs to clarify this, but I believe that when we decided not to give them a loan and we decided to just give them the grant and we took ourselves off the board, that we removed ourselves from the obligation or their obligation to give us any financial information. So I don't think they're under any obligation to give us that because of the change that we made. Do I have that right?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, Alessandro, uh, city attorney is checking for the, the last final version of the term sheet. My, uh, belief is that you're correct, that the obligation they have is to provide quarterly reports on box office. And the information that we have from them was essentially a, a report on the number of tickets that were sold during that quarter. And so, uh, they are not obligated to provide financial information to us as a result of that, um, agreement.
And, and I understand that the financial statements that they provided to us as part of this grant application were from the 2021 fiscal year, but that makes sense given what we know about their situation and that they probably aren't yet at the position where they can give us audited financial results for last year. they can give us audited financial results for last year. What we do know is that they've they've been able to negotiate 70% of their their obligations in terms of their debt and other things like that. I know that only because I subscribe to their newsletter and I got it today and they told me that. So they're they are providing public information about how they're doing. But I I don't believe that we can hold them accountable for information they're not obligated to give us.
Well, but I believe they are obligated as part of the application. If they want the grant application, they they're not obligated to provide it, but if they want to fulfill the grant application, they should be providing the information.
But well, I understand what you're saying. I guess my point is they give they if I maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I heard that they gave us the information that was required as part of the application. The additional financial statements were from a year prior, but they did provide them.
Well, but the I think the the requirement was the most recent years?
Most recently completed fiscal year.
Yeah. And and my understanding, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is that because of the dire financial situation last year and the timing of when the grant applications were due, they may not have had the financial statements finalizer in order. I don't know that to be certain, but I do know that for a good part of last year, they did not have the the financial data available to them. So they provided what they did have most recently, which was, you know, the the fiscal year prior to that.
Right.
The other thing that I would say also is that we still had an old we still have an owed obligation from Artistry in the amount of about $32,000.
Okay, I don't know anything about that particular one. What what I would just suggest is that the the recommendation in front of us was made with the financial information that they provided. So it's not like we said, no, we're not going to give them any money because they didn't give us the data that we needed. If we wanted to disqualify their application, we should have done that. Now that we haven't done that, I'm just saying we should probably give them the money that that that, you know, some some more money than what they've asked that that what we've what the recommendation is because we know of their financial benefit to us in terms of the civic arts that they provide here. That that's what I'm saying. I don't want to argue whether or not they should have provide. I mean, one of somebody can go as an independent and get on the board or give them a big check and then go get all their financial data. I mean, they're a nonprofit. There's lots of ways to get that information. I just don't think that they're obligated to give it to us. And if the information they did give us give to us was comfortable enough for this or for this recommended recommendation to give them money, then I'm not sure we should be having a conversation about whether or not they were they should have been on the list or not. I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't know if I'm making any sense anymore, but I I would just, if we don't want to give them the money, that's fine, but I think holding them accountable to something now after the recommendation's been made with information that they did that that he give give is necessarily appropriate.
Mr. Brackey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember De La Sondro, I just want to be clear that nobody, at least from the staff perspective or the review committee's perspective, is suggesting that Artistry should have been disqualified from this process. That couldn't be further from the truth. The recommendation from the planning committee is based on the information presented to us and an evaluation of the quality of the grant application, which was indicated in the memo. The committee felt that it was the the lowest scoring among all of the applicants in terms of the quality of the application and the understood benefit to the community that was going to be gained by providing the grant dollars. Nobody is saying that they should be disqualified from the process by any means whatsoever.
And I would also add, this notion of of spending all the money, which I understand that we we'd like to support the arts and I support the arts as much as anybody, but I also support the committee that was evaluating the grant applications as to whether or not they were the the applications and what they saw as the the programming coming out of that was adequate for full funding. I mean, I I support the arts, I also support Good Roads, but if we had a road budget or a budget for a project and whoever's doing the project wasn't doing everything we asked of them or they didn't meet the applicant the the expectations of what we were hoping to accomplish and we still decided, well, but we're going to give them all the money anyway. I it's it's comparable and I just don't don't necessarily agree with it. And I do respect the work of the the committee that took the time to review the applications and had these discussions and and brought these recommendations forward. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just just briefly, I think, I'm just thinking how how nice it would have been all the nonprofits I fundraised for if I had this panel reviewing a subpar application that I put in front of them because it's these are all good organizations doing good work, obviously, and are assets to the community. But along those same lines, that's why we we have a process, why these are reviewed and why we allocate based on the quality of what's put in front of us. And and if this if we want to have a conversation at some point down the line about the review committee and how it's made up and where we recruit from, that's that's certainly possible. But they came forward with us with a recommendation saying this, what the plans put in front of us were worth 30 grand, not 80 grand. And that's kind of just how it works when you're asking for money. And I'm also nervous about the impression that we're just picking favorites, to say these organizations that have done great things in the past, they could do great things in the future, and because of the stress they're under, they're not obligated to to put forward accurate or detailed enough information in their application. Last time, the issue of moral hazard, maybe not quite the right term, basically moral hazard, of bailing out the organization to a large extent in the first place and what happened three weeks later, another organization came to our public conversation upstairs to say, oh, how can I get 100 grand? Where do I submit an application to? And and on the back end of this process, I I just don't see how organizations aren't coming out of the woodwork saying, well, you didn't get me, you didn't chase me down, you didn't request more information, you didn't understand that I was in a tough place and super busy when I filled out the application too. So I honestly, I just kind of think this is a tough love situation for an organization that does really good work and failed to deliver in this application. So I I won't be supporting the the reallocation of of funds, in particular, the increase for Artistry.
Councilmember Loman?
I I want to thank both the mayor and and Councilmember Martin in terms of what what you're saying. I I do agree with my my colleague, Councilman De La Sondro. The only thing I'm asking for is from a fiduciary responsibility in the application, the fiscal year financial statements, I'd like to have that information before we provide additional. So I can support, you know, the 7,900, you know, the, you know, whatever else we have here, the the other awarded for the Notable Singers, the 498. I don't have any issue with that, but I just think before this body, you know, gives Artistry additional dollars, and I would support up to 80, you know, certainly I respect what what the committee has come up with, but, you know, I do think I agree with your your statement that you made, the fact that, you know, they're providing a different service. And and I do think it's 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 worthwhile to consider that, but I just need to see additional financials that every other organization that submitted their application put forward. So if if that's a part of this of this motion, then I can support whatever dollar amount you want to want to give, but but I can't unless I have that that item D for that fiscal year financial statements from from Artistry.
Now, to be clear, we don't have a motion yet. We have a a recommendation to try and bridge this gap and figure this out.
You know what, Mayor, I can go ahead and get that so we can get moving on this.
Councilmember Loman?
Happy to throw that out there and see what we got here. So I'll go ahead and move the recommendation that De La Sondro did with 35,000 awarded for Angelica Conte, 30,000 awarded to the Artistry, 7,900, I think it was, for the Bloomington Corral. And then the other ones are fine, the way they're listed, except for the other change would be with the Notable Singers, they would get 5,498. And then the only caveat that I would say is that I would put in there is that we could consider additional funding for for Artistry once the fiscal year financial statements are received and then another date. So that'd be my motion.
Do we have a second? Second. We've got a motion and a second by motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson. I look down to my right to make sure that our city attorney has the information correct and we we are in a place that we can move forward.
Mayor members, I've compared notes with Mr. Brillhart, and I believe that we have the information correct.
Listen, I just wanted to confirm that, so you're altering the amounts from the recommendation on two of the organizations, correct?
Yeah, two, well, three.
Corral, Corral 78 and?
7,900 on Bloomington Corral.
Okay, 7,900 on Corral. Notables 5,498 and and Artistry 50,000 with Artistry being eligible for additional money after they produce?
So just so we're clear, it's
Financial information.
It'd be the 30,000, you know, with the the caveat that once we receive information from fiscal year statements D, that we'd be able to?
So so your recommendation or your motion was for Artistry at 30,000?
Yeah, keep them right there at 30,000. And then if we get the additional fiscal information, we'd be able to come back at a later date and award additional dollars.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Everybody, just one second, everybody clear on on that so far?
There was a second on that, too, Mayor.
Yes, there was, yep.
Is that?
Discussion, so Councilmember Carter?
So can you share what was included in Artistry's application? Like, what did they say they wanted to do? Because I think I'm making an assumption that it's just theater, the theater, like, kind of, you know, just theater and the summer camps or something, because it's not actually noted in here. But then the panelists did say that they appreciate the strengths were their high quality of productions, diverse leadership that works to serve the BIPOC community, efforts to start re-engagement with the local school system, which I have heard from teachers how much they've appreciated the Artistry partnerships, pay what you can performances, which I think are is great and is increasing access to the arts, and then positive steps of engagement with other resident art organizations. Was all of that included in their application or is that just what was known about Artistry? Like, what was in what was actually included in what they were proposing to do?
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my role as moderator, one of the first things that I stressed was that this review process was about the applications submitted. And so everything within the memo that was summarized from their discussion is noted from their application. So I stressed very hard to the panelists that no assumptions could be made. And it was also explained to me in inheriting this process that we would not have any sort of consideration from this council's previous decisions that would affect this process in any way. So what you're reading is everything that was included.
So but I don't see what was included in their application. Like, what were the was it the theater program? Like, I don't understand what were the uses for? That's not included in our rec our packet.
It would be difficult to to summarize it on this. I'd be happy to send you more information.
So I guess I'm asking because like if it's if it is like literally just like if it's just the theater and like one other thing, I would, I mean, you know, I'd be more comfortable with like saying, okay, fine. But like if if they're proposing also, like, you know, the the school partnership work, engaging with BIPOC community, I mean, like, there's a whole lot of other things that is kind of mentioned. And so I don't know about you guys, but it's very hard for me to make a decision without actually knowing what was in the proposal. Like, I get I I totally see like public benefit administration, like, the the remarks from the panel, but I don't know how to judge if it's $30,000 worth of work or $80,000 worth of work because it's not in there.
Councilmember Carter, would it be helpful for us to share their application narrative with you?
Sure.
So you can review that yourselves as a council and then we can share the criteria and you've already got the blank RFP. I mean, those three pieces should give you a pretty good look at the application criteria, the questions and how they they answered those via their narrative and what was there. And then some many of you know them well, frankly, what wasn't there?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be helpful? Because we can certainly do that for you.
Yeah. And I would say in the future, it would be nice to just have like a little summary of like what it is. I mean, like, for some of them, it's obvious, but for some, it might not be. And and to Councilmember Nelson's point, right, one of the organizations on their website, they're doing one show in Bloomington, but maybe in their proposal, they're proposing 10. And like, we just don't necessarily know that. So for future, that would be.
So so what I'm hearing, the the numbers that we talked about, but some additional information requests based on what Artistry, their their financials, their most recent financials and their application to understand a little bit better what we're talking about with Artistry. Again, to Councilmember Carter's point, don't know if it's worth 30,000 or 80,000 because we need more information. So, yep, yep. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll likely support this, but I I am very concerned about Artistry. You know, we ran into they ran into a situation where they didn't have financials for a long time and what I just heard is they don't have financials.
Mm-hmm.
And and I I'm just, I mean, frankly, I'm just kind of dumbfounded by that, that they still don't have financials. I mean, that I I mean, I'm just candidly really hesitant to give them anything right now. That was the problem before. There was, I mean, they may send out an email that says they got rid of 70% of their debt, but I'd prefer to see a financial statement that says that. And and I mean, isn't this how we got in the problem into the mess in the first place?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I don't want anybody to infer by what I said that they don't have financials that are current. They didn't provide the most recent financial year data in the application. And we all know they were having issues with their finances at the end of the last fiscal year. We also don't know because we're no longer ex officio to the board and don't have access to the financial information of the organization and they're under no obligation to provide it. If they have concluded the last year's fiscal year update or audit or any of that information and it wasn't required as part of this. So the only thing you have to go on is by what they submitted, the the most recent fiscal year that they had. So I I think it is reasonable to ask them if, again, if they want to share that information, if the council wants to consider providing a higher amount. I have talked to the board president. He he believes that they are in a a stable and encouraging position. Didn't tell me what the state of their financial statements are. I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just read from, I believe, what is the application, copy of your organization's most recent fiscal year financial statements. Doesn't say most recent completed, just says the most recent financial, and they didn't provide that. And that, I mean, it just, it's a huge concern for me. I mean, they
Understood, understood.
You know.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. I think I think we should go to a vote here just to figure out where we are and where we can move forward. Everybody's comfortable with that? Does everybody understand the motion that's on the table? I think, yeah, we read it back pretty clearly and we understand where we're at. Everybody cool? All right, all in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries six, one, with Councilmember Martin opposing. And so those those numbers that we had adjusted and then kept the same are are what we're moving forward with. And with the understanding that we may, I don't know that we will, but we may consider additional for Artistry, given if we if we see more information from them that would justify that. Is that fair to say? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Apologies about the timeframe here, but can someone just recommend that they do it right next year? Like, like strongly recommend?
Yes.
I mean, because this is, I I mean, honestly, again, I'm dumbfounded to learn that they didn't provide those financials.
Thank you very much and thank the committee for their work as well.
Thank you.
Counsel, before we move on to fight item 5.2 and 3, I'm going to ask that we extend our deadline by 30 minutes, I think, no more, not to exceed 30 minutes because we've got some more work to finish up here. So I will move that we will extend our deadline to 11:30.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero, no later than 11:30. So now we've got a hard deadline, not just a deadline, but a hard deadline in this. Item 5.2, the contract for final design on the 30% designer Brian and Trent Baugh Parks and the consultant contract for final design. Good evening, Ms. Clark, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight presenting with Brad Aldrich, also from our design team from Confluence. Tonight, I will give us some planning context, review the 30% design and cost estimates, and then talk about next steps. I do first want to recognize the project team, many listed here, even some not listed here, and some key members of the team are in the audience with me tonight, Dave Hanson, Brian Greedle. Thank you both for being here. And then Liz Hickson, also from Confluence here tonight. We completed the park master plan back in 2021. This is foundational to the planning work we started a year ago and to the projects before you tonight. These park redeveloping, the park redevelopment plans and this planning is consistent with the master plan and balancing the locations of new amenities across the park system. the master plan and, um, balancing the locations of new amenities across the park system. Four priority park elements emerged during the park master plan process, natural resources, trails and mobility, new park amenities and equity. We're going to talk about the thirty percent design in cons, in context of these priority park elements. Um, regarding park equity, one, um, element of that is the prioritization tool that we initiated a GIS project, which in part operationalizes this tool that we proposed in the master plan. While it's still being completed, I just wanted to note that Bryant Park ranks second using that criteria amongst all the plans were, parks were planning, with Smith Park ranking first, um, and council, um, recommended an investment, um, in Smith Park for a new playground with strategic priorities money for this year. So, um, we started the concept planning for nine parks a year ago. We're here tonight with the thirty percent design of Bryant and Tretba to prepare for twenty-twenty-four construction. The other seven concepts have been delivered. We'll be reviewing those with the public, um, and those will also include cost estimates and then be used as a planning tool for our CIP moving forward. The process, um, again, that, uh, we, we initiated a year ago, um, came with public engagement throughout and, um, engagement of the council and our Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, as well as, um, staff. I'd like to turn it over to Brad to, um, formally introduce himself a bit, and then he'll review the concept plans for each of the parks.
Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Um, it's great to be here to talk about Bryant and Tretba. Um, considering the time, I will go over the thirty percent plans at a pretty high level, and as you wish and want more detail, we will answer, answer questions about those. As Renee said, we're going to sort of couch this and frame it with the priorities that we discussed from the park system master plan. So starting with Tretba, if you're familiar with Tretba now, it is currently, uh, I guess it was, a broom ball courts essentially, in a large kind of gravel area and a small warming house. So this is the plan that was actually explored in the park system master plan, that really consists of turning the broom ball court area into a bike skills area. So that kind of cloverleaf item, kind of on the west side of the park, would be that area, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, um, a little later. And then some supporting infrastructure for that bike skills area, including a parking lot and a kind of a picnic pavilion for, um, gathering. So just kind of referring back to the key park priorities, I think number one, um, natural resources is so huge in Bloomington, and really the key element for natural resources at Tretba is a lot of invasive species control around that buffer area. If you know, Tretba is flat on top, and it kind of dips down to the large wetland on the south side. And I think it's really critical to restore that area, control a lot of the buckthorn and invasive trees that are in that area, but that also will open up a lot of views to that beautiful wetland to the south as well. Another key element is reusing, um, or using the natural areas to actually do sort of double duty, not only to provide more natural resources in the park, but also to, um, utilize that for green infrastructure that would actually treat the stormwater, um, from maybe some of the, um, introduced impervious, such as the parking lot. Um, the next is park needs, and that's really looking at what the community wants. And this is really about updating this park, especially to kind of a really more modern kind of recreational amenity. These bike skills areas are really popular, um, nationwide, in Minnesota especially, and I would say even more so in the metro. There's a lot of them planned. This would be the first one in the city, and I think it will be, um, very highly used. Um, from an equity and access perspective, I think, building on that, I think this is going to be a really unique feature, because we are planning to reuse the lighting that was at the broom ball courts and light the, the bike skills area. To my knowledge, I don't know of any other facility in the metro or in the state that would have that. So I think this would be kind of extending that usage later into the evening, especially in fall, um, and spring evenings, um, I think would be a real benefit. Um, I think this is also a park that might be a little bit difficult to, with the soils, with it so near a wetland, to really introduce like, a lot of, um, really big infrastructure moves, such as buildings, such as extensive courts. We're really kind of using what the site is giving us. I think these, these facilities are really kind of on themselves to this low impact use. Um, and then lastly, the, the last priority is trails and mobility. You know, we're building a bike skills course. We would love it if the neighborhood would actually bike to the bike skills course. Um, this facility will help make better bike riders in Bloomington. It is also, um, kind of the center of that area is designed for all-wheel, so you can use scooters, you can use skateboards, you can use, um, rollerblades, and it's really about training and learning how to do these things better. Um, and I think connecting to the neighborhood is really important. So I think Renee is going to talk a little bit about how we're planning to do that, and how that maybe fits in with some of the other key planning, um, department moves.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. Um, councilmembers, throughout the community engagement process, um, access to parks, safe access, um, was mentioned a lot around both Tretba and Bryant. The team, um, included a lot of coordination with our colleagues in engineering to examine safe access routes. Um, we looked at that through the active transportation plan, and then just individually as a team designing these parks. Um, what I have shown on here across ninetieth is the, um, cited location for an improved crossing. The, um, final concepts have sidewalk, um, new sidewalk from France up to this park. Um, what we've discussed with public work staff is, um, they will be developing a project to add these amenities, and will be coming to council to order a feasibility study, looking at those, um, sidewalk and safety connections around both parks, um, at a subsequent meeting. So that's not forgotten or not included, but just going to be, um, planned and built, um, by engineering through a, a separate project.
Great. And then Bryant Park, um, a much bigger park and a much different park, but I think, um, a, as Renee mentioned, it's a pretty, um, important park in kind of redeveloping the park system master plan. And I think it's unique in this location and what we're sort of, um, trying to, uh, discuss here tonight. Um, I think just looking at it from the park priorities perspective, number one, again, is natural resources. And if you, um, currently are familiar with Bryant Park, it's almost broken up into two sections. There's the north section and the south section. The north section is really a sort of a passive open area, and the south section is where a lot of the activities, recreational activities occur, like baseball, like, um, winter hockey. Um, and we are proposing to keep it generally like that. Um, I think the northern section is a lot more going on from a natural resource perspective. There's a significant, um, wetland restoration, up to three acres of wetland restoration that we're proposing, four acres of, um, of upland restoration that would go with that. So that northern section would really be sort of, um, beautified, um, and kind of put more to work. There's significant flooding issues at this park. What we're, what we're trying to do here is improve water quality, but also address the flooding issues in this area as well with some of these designs. Um, the southern area, we're still approaching it as the kind of active recreation area, but again, trying to tweak it to meet some of the park needs of the neighborhood. So, um, the natural resources, again, I just kind of mentioned the key elements that would be included in that. Um, and I think we're using native vegetation to, again, use, use it as green infrastructure, do double duty, but also to stitch the park together. Um, from the park needs perspective, there's a number of interesting things here that are going on that really sort of update the park system master plan, and one of those key items is an accessible playground. There isn't really one in the city. This would be the first one that would be fully accessible, and I think it would be a huge benefit to this area. Um, another key element, um, from an equity and access perspective, that is really important with Bryant, Bloomington has great access to most of the parks. This is one area of the city where Bryant Park maybe needs to do a little bit more work. There is a gap to the east and west side of Bryant, that there really is difficult access to it. So, looking at this park, I think compared to some other parks in the system, it might need to serve a little bit more people, um, and more uses, and be a little bit more flexible, especially from a natural resource perspective. When we looked at natural resources, if you are, you know, east of Bryant Park, you have pretty good access to the Minnesota River Valley. If you're west of Bryant Park, you have good access to Highland. This is kind of a little bit of a, a natural resources desert. That's, again, one of the reasons we're putting so much emphasis on natural resources in this design. And then again, from trails and mo, and mobility, this is an important park, and we're trying to connect to it. Renee is going to talk a little bit about that. But I think the other thing to point out is all the, sort of, you can see the white sidewalks and trails. We're really trying to create loops in this park. It's a big park. It can really serve the neighborhood. You know, this is a great place to do your after-work walks with the dog, with, you know. There's a lot of, there's actually a lack of sidewalks here as well, that I think by introducing those, um, it helps create those loops, but also just create safety in the neighborhood for pedestrian. Um, Renee is going to talk a little bit about how that might integrate with some of the other park planning.
Sure. I just would like to add, the thirty percent design and the project we're, um, requesting authorization to move forward with tonight includes the trail loops within the parks. The engineering study and separate construction project would include the sidewalks around the parks and addressing access to the park, um, crossings. I think that Eighty-Sixth Street is a little more straightforward to solve than we looked at, um, Eighty-Second Street, which I think is a little bit more difficult to solve, but, um, all something that, and, and the engineering study will evaluate and do separately. Oops, did you have anything else?
Any questions, um, specifically about either of those parks?
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so in the Tretba community, listening, planning, I know that a couple of the versions had a potential dog park. I'm just wondering the rationale for taking it out. I mean, I saw that there was one at Bryant potentially, so my thinking is like, well, maybe it's because it's in close proximity. I mean, we don't need to have them at every park. So I guess, just curious, the rationale behind that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We did evaluate that, and based on public feedback of the final concept plan, um, and evaluation of our park commission, we felt it was, in one sense, squeezing too much into this site, where the focus is really on trying to maximize the bike skills park amenity. And secondly, that, um, the mix of dogs and bikes isn't necessarily always compatible, um, and could create dangers for both. So for those two reasons, and the, the input and recommendation of our park commission, we modified the concept in the thirty percent to, uh, remove that element. Thank you. The cost estimates at this phase, I packaged the cost into categories. Both parks, um, aim to accomplish, um, many different services. We've, um, I highlighted a playground in the bike skills course for Tretba, the park shelter building, which will be designed and constructed, um, on a concurrent phase, the park amenities and site amenities. We separated stormwater restoration and landscape, and then included, um, design fees and a construction contingency. So the project cost estimate for each of these parks is before you tonight, the nine point two seven two five six eight for Bryant, and one point two nine eight two five for Tretba Park.
Can I? Mr. Boogie?
Thank you. I just want to, uh, go back to that slide real quickly, if we can, Renee, thank you. I just want to reiterate, just to make sure that that bottom line is not confusing to anybody, that the dollar amount is not the thirty, is not thirty percent of what the estimated cost is. That's after thirty percent pre-design, this is what we're estimating the project cost to be, right? We haven't done the full design yet. This is the thirty percent estimate, and here's the total cost of the project. So I want to make sure everybody fully understood.
Nine point two million is not thirty percent of the total cost, so just so we're clear. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. There are three primarily, primary funding sources identified for the project. Um, federal ARP dollars that we dedicated to natural resource work, um, in total, um, five hundred thousand dollars, stormwater utility budget that will go towards the stormwater, um, designs for the parks, and then charter bonds for the remainder. I'll note that, um, if council elects to move forward with the project as proposed, or any modifications of, staff will come before you with, uh, reimbursement resolution in July to initiate the charter bonding process. In addition to, um, reviewing and approving the thirty percent designs for the project, staff's also requesting authorization to enter into a service agreement to complete, um, the design, do construction documents and construction administration. We did an RFP for proposals, received three responses from Confluence, Bolton and Mink, and StanTech. We had a staff review team of five people, um, from parks, five people total, and they came from the Parks Department, Park Maintenance and Engineering. The evaluation of the proposals included costs, experience and references, making up the primary, um, score, and then clarity of the scope and deliverables, schedule and the project team. Confluence was selected by the review team based on those evaluation criteria. The planning process. So the, the takeaway here is, um, the shelter building, design and construction, and playground design and construction will move on a concurrent process with, um, a different design team that will coordinate with the prime consultant here on the park. And I've got three check-ins with council as part of this process. Um, one is the July I mentioned with the reimbursement resolution, but, uh, staff's proposing to come back at around ninety percent design with, um, a near-completed plan and, uh, more final cost estimate, and then requesting authorization to go out for bids for the project. We'd be back then to council, um, with those bids, requesting, um, a bid award then, um, in March of twenty-twenty-four. So, um, as you contemplate your decision, I'd also, um, like to confirm that, that those checkpoints sound, sound reasonable as we move through the process, as this is our first kind of design take and our first cost estimate that we're able to look at with the project. So the requested action tonight is approval of the thirty percent design plans, and then authorization to enter into a service agreement, um, for the construction documents, construction admin for both projects, in an amount not to exceed four hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. And in answer to your question, uh, unless there's disagreement here, it sounds to me like those, those checking, those checkpoints seem to make sense. I mean, they, they would be a good time to
Okay.
reevaluate everything, so I appreciate that. Council questions? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would be, I would be interested in understanding a little bit more about the, um, specifics for the, uh, actual facility at Bryant Park. The three million dollar price tag is a lot, and, um, you know, I, I'm just not kind, I'm not sure what amenities are included in that, um, you know. Uh, so a bit more of a, a description of what that, um, entails, uh, so that we know what we're getting for that three million dollars would be really helpful, if that's possible. And I don't mean that it has to be in front of this vote tonight, but, um, you know, it, it, uh, it would be useful to have a little bit more, specifically on that thirty percent design of that actual building, maybe is the way to put that, I don't know, but to understand what that facility is, is what you're thinking about with it today, it would be great.
Sure.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, the building is, um, building off the concept design that we did, um, during planning last year, and it's, um, also intended to create a standard for other park shelter buildings. The, um, cost estimate, um, at that concept level of the design we did, um, was, um, I believe, three point six million. So that was the basis for establishing a budget. There were, it was, um, it really maximized our, our wish list and was a very, um, nice, unique design. Um, but the general scope includes about two thousand square feet of indoor spaces with two gender-neutral bathrooms accessible from the inside and two gender-neutral bathrooms accessible from the outside, um, keyless entry, um, internet access, year-round programming. Keyless entry, internet access, year-round programming to support private events as well as our park programming. And then also the kind of extra function durability as a winter warming house. Sustainability is also requested as part of the design. And in the request for proposals, we're asking to meet the Minnesota B3 standard or one of the lead levels. We didn't request certification, but sort of set that benchmark as we're still evaluating what, where Bloomington will land on ordinance. But set a sustainability benchmark there too, which contributes to cost.
Great. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Thank you much. Appreciate the presentation. Council, questions or discussions or, or action? Your choice on, on one of these. Councilmember Muah?
I just have a quick question and if we're ready, I can make the motion too. But I'm very excited about this. I'm going to take a moment and plug the Todd Pod Play Group here in Bloomington. Big, big fans and my family is an active member in that group. So if anyone has kids zero to five years old, please go to toddpod.org and sign up for the email playlist. And it's, it's amazing. It's incredible. We are a city of 90,000 and we don't have an accessible playground. Everyone else around us has one and has had one for many years. And so it's about time we got one and we're very excited about it. So that's all I got to say. All right. So no one's got anything else? I'll go ahead and make two motions. A move to approve the 30% designs for the Bryant and Treppa Parks Reconstruction Project as reflected in the staff presentation and agenda material.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Loman to approve the 30% design plans for Bryant and Treppa Parks. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Muah?
And I'd move to authorize the city, the mayor and city manager to enter into a professional services agreement or any amendments or modifications thereto for design and construction management for the Bryant and Treppa Parks Reconstruction Projects in an amount not to exceed $412,378.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Loman to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into the necessary agreements as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so very much. This is very exciting. Looking forward to this. I, I know the desire by so many folks for a bike track, so that's fantastic and love to see that. And the Bryant Park design is fantastic as well. I think there's going to be serving a lot of folks there, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council, we're on item 5.3, the City Council Policy and Issue Update. I will give a quick recap of our listening session earlier this evening. Heard from a couple of people, Brian Savig talked about different communications opportunities, specifically suggesting that the draft agenda appear in the sun current a week or so in advance of the meeting, just an opportunity to give people more time and a better understanding of the agenda. A little more time to see it ahead of the meeting itself. We had a good conversation about all the different tools, the different communications tools, including our listserv and our email groups and so on. So it was a good conversation and I think some of it was reflected actually in the presentation we heard earlier this evening as well. And Michael List spoke to us. He spoke to us about the issues around group homes and residential areas. Talked about different issues around code enforcement and just the concerns. His concerns that it's a business in a residential area and that the two were not compatible at all. But two good discussions actually, once again this week in our, in our listening session with two residents who I think were glad to have the opportunity to talk to us. So, Mr. Verbrugge, anything tonight?
No, sir.
Council, anything tonight? Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember DeLisandro, you guys split up the seven minutes.
All right, I'll be quick. I wanted to raise the issue from last meeting, the 310, the resolution authorizing the Port Authority to use funds within the South Loop Development Fund for the purchase of certain properties located in the city. I know that we had, the last time we got together, there was some confusion about that. And I just wanted to just get clarification. Mayor, you were a part of the Port Authority. And then I know manager, we've had conversations about this and I wanted to raise, and we probably can't have the full conversation tonight, but I wanted to make sure we raised that as soon as after that, because we had some, some serious confusion about that whole, that vote for Marriott.
So you're looking for a conversation of the role of the Port Authority, the role of the council and how best to make sure that the work that we do integrates as well as it possibly could?
Yeah, I mean, we found ourselves in a position where, I mean, it happened to be we weren't here. And then also past practices that we followed in the past, we have, when a number of that amount has come before the council, we've had the opportunity to, you know, have a meeting or at least have a conversation with the city manager so that we understood what it was that we're actually voting on. And so just from, from my perspective as a council member, it's very disappointing to not have the details in that information. And I'm not looking to blame, but I just want to make sure that we've set up a process kind of going forward that we not find ourselves in that position again. So.
Very good. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I just wanted to say thank you to all the folks that coordinated and put on our first Juneteenth. It was awesome. I had a blast. And I wanted to call that out because anytime we can do that kind of good work together as a community, we should be proud of ourselves and, and I don't know, raise a glass or two. So I had a great time. I hope everybody else got the chance to go out there. I really encourage us to keep going with it. I really hope we continue to support it as a community. So thank you to everybody that put that on.
And I would echo that. I heard from a lot of folks what a great time it was, so glad to hear that. Councilmember Loman?
So if we have a second more, I wanted to make sure you got your stuff in. I was just going to mention that this past Thursday, our Sustainability Commission, really our whole city, we won an award as a sustainability city for our revamping of our old spring cleanup program. And I think we've done, we did a nice job on that. I know they're going to come back and have a bigger presentation, but just wanted to congratulate staff and council for our hard work on, on turning that thing around.
And to be clear, this was an award given by the League of Minnesota Cities that it was Bloomington set apart from all the cities in Minnesota and being recognized for the outstanding work that our staff and the Sustainability Commission and this council did in rethinking the spring cleanup and how to do it more efficiently and more effectively and with less trash going to landfills. Very good. Councilmember Nelson?
I am actually just wondering if you have an announcement about anything regarding next Monday?
Summer Fete?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. You had me for a second there. Summer Fete, next Monday. Thank you. Our annual July 3rd celebration, Summer Fete Monday at the Normandale Lake Band Shell. Always a fantastic time, food trucks, activities, great music and of course, the best fireworks in Minnesota on July 3rd. So please do join us if you're able to. Hope to see everybody there as we get an opportunity to stand on the stage and wave at everybody and, but have a chance to talk to a lot of folks as well. So thank you for the reminder, councilmember. I appreciate it. Council, nothing further for this evening's meeting. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight. No further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thanks much for the council, to the council for your discussions this evening. Thanks, staff. Thanks to everybody who helped out and tuned in. Thanks.